Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for August the 16th, 2021. Thank you for being here tonight. We have three action items or study items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is the 2022 budget request, the Wheat Ridge Business District, Local Works, and the Carnation Festival. Item number two is an update on the Lutheran Legacy Campus Master Plan. And item number three is Mayor and Council pay. After that, we'll have staff reports and elected officials' reports. As we traditionally do, we will start our study session with comments from our public. I have a sign up sheet. Don't worry if you haven't signed up. We'll take anyone who hasn't signed up at the end of the, end of the sign up folks. And when I call your name, if you'd please come to the podium and adjust the microphone so we can hear you clearly and give us your first name and your last name. If you'd please give us your address also for the record and spell your last name. We'll make sure that the clerk can get that in the minutes accurately. And you will have three minutes to address the council. And we have some lights that we're using in, to help you with timing. And let me, because I'm a little rusty on this, the green light appears when the speaker commences speaking. The green light will flash when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining. The yellow light will then appear when the speaker has 15 seconds remaining, which is time to sort of conclude your comments. And when the red light goes on, your time has elapsed and we'd appreciate it if you would sort of close your remarks. So, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, but you'll have the opportunity to, to correct me on that. So, I believe I have Roseanne Caffer, our first speaker, with John Cullman on deck. Yes, sir, right here. And we should have a live mic. You got to kind of adjust it so it's comfortable for you.
Okay.
If you'd like to take down your mask, that's certainly fine.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
No, I'm John Cullen, and I do not live in Wheat Ridge. I live in the district where Kevin Flynn has worked to redevelop Loretta Heights. For 20 years, I've been friends with Roseanne Caffer, who lives on 38 Forte Balsam.
Okay.
And, and the neighbors around there too. So, I'm familiar with the area. I just, in the process of streamlining anything you want to do, it's good to learn from people who have done things in the past. And the Denver City Council has just passed, finally after much community input, zoning for the Loretta Heights campus, which is 73 acres versus the 100 acres of Lutheran. And here's what the plan does. I thought it'd be helpful. And possibly the company called Westside Investment Partners might be useful too, just to, you know, to what they've done to streamline the process in about five years and then the last two years, they've really come together with the community. Because the plan is to preserve and maintain historic buildings on Loretta Heights campus, a safer experience for pedestrians and new bike lanes, development that matches the pattern of the surrounding neighborhoods, and for, and also for sale and for rent affordable housing, and a climate-friendly construction that the city says will be the first major residential development to test the Denver Green Code. So I'm just saying that possibly that development group and as well as people from Kevin Flynn's office could tell you about some of the hurdles they had to get over and maybe we wouldn't have to go over that. We might be able to streamline the, the effort to develop that campus in a way that's best for the community. And that's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I believe our next speaker is Sandy Nance.
Hello. Sandy, and the last name is N-A-N-C-E, address 4097 Field Drive. I have two things, two items that I wanted to talk about. The first was the budget. I was, I was quite unhappy to read Ann Lee, Wheat Ridge Historical Society newsletter, that their budget had been cut, that they were going to be open instead of four days a week, they were going to be open one day a week. That kind of hits hard because my friend, another Wheat Ridge resident, Gabe Porter-Denelian, and I have a contract with Arcadia Publishing to do one of those little sepia tone books that sits on racks, drugstores, and we're going to do it on Wheat Ridge history. So we are collecting photos of old-time Wheat Ridge. And if you have any, contact me. But we need the, the, we, we need for the, the city to, the Historical Society to clean up and kind of organize. And their records are kind of a mess, I'll put it that way. They need help cleaning that up. And to have it shut down at a time when we need it is, is not the right time. So, let's see, that's, that's for the budget. I also am pleased that the, excuse me. I want to speak on behalf of the Blue House and the Chapel. I really, really, really want to save those. I think this, it's important as we've got a city that is thriving, vibrant, but you don't throw its character out the window once you've got it. We need to save the character of Wheat Ridge, and part of that is its history. And the Blue House and that chapel at Lutheran are definitely part of the history of Wheat Ridge, and I would beseech you to save it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. I believe our next speaker is Linda that lives at 4460 Moore Court in here in Wheat Ridge. And I'm not going to go with your last name, so if you'd give us that too.
My name is Linda Grantham. I live at 4460 Moore Court and have resided in Wheat Ridge for over 30 years. I am here with some of my fellow board members from the Wheat Ridge Historical Society as well. And we were very distressed when we heard that our hours are going to be diminished down to part of one day a week as opposed to four days a week. And I would like to just point out that it's actually more of a security risk not having people there during those times when ordinarily it's occupied and doors are open and it's busy. But I can see it's no more infrastructure improvement or lawn maintenance to have it open four days as opposed to one. But I'm also here tonight with people on behalf of the Save Our Sanitarium, which one of our speakers will speak to much more eloquently. And for my one last thing that I would like to say, I went to the Wheat Ridge, city of Wheat Ridge homepage today, and I happened to notice some very alarming things. And under See and Do, as in Suggestions for Recreation, Denver Art Museum, Colorado State Capitol, Molly Brown House, Colorado Railroad Museum. And it said if you want to explore more, go to Arvada, Golden, Westminster, Edgewater, or Lakewood. It almost occurs to me that it sounds like if you read the webpage and you were a stranger here, that we'd be trying to get rid of you to get you to one of these other areas instead of enjoying the parks and the facilities and bike paths and lakes that we have right here. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name's Marta Hedy. My address is 7385 West 28th Avenue, right across the police parking lot if you'd like to drop by for a cup of coffee. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Wheat Ridge Historical Society Board. Over the weekend, we launched a campaign called Save Our Sanitarium. We're interested in saving the Blue House, not only the Blue House, but also the little TB tent that is right behind the Blue House, the chapel, the Lutheran Chapel. And then there's a blond brick 1960s ranch-style home that's across the main entrance. It was the original administrator's house. That little bundle right there in the corner holds a lot of Wheat Ridge's history. Wheat Ridge was the center of the universe during the TB scourge of the early 1900s. Did I do that? I didn't think...
Looks like we're still okay, so...
Oh, it was my cane.
Oh.
I haven't got it trained yet, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
People came to, came to Colorado because they were told that the air quality here and the freshness and the mountain air and so forth would cure them. That was the only thing that would cure them. Well, that was a little off. They came and they lived in tents, like the one directly south of the Blue House, year round, in a canvas tent. They were given a wool blanket, and they had a little stove in each tent. The first year, 10 people died and something like 38 were able to survive. The top floor of the Blue House was reserved for eight of the most ill patients. Okay? It was chock full for years and years and decades. Now, that's a pretty important function for, it's not exactly little, it's kind of a big, big old farmhouse that turned into a sanitarium. We want to see that preserved. We want to see the tent preserved. It's the only remaining TB tent. And of course, many people are real distressed about the Chapel. We've had a lot of inquiries about the Chapel. And then, of course, the administrator's house. I worked the Carnation Festival this weekend, and we had a little petition that said, do you support? Not asking them really to do anything or pass anything, just do you support? Everybody signed it. Everybody is really, really interested in this topic. I certainly hope that we can work together to preserve that little corner of the SCL campus. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the individuals that I have signed up on the list. Is there anyone here who didn't get to sign up who would like to speak on one of the agenda items? Please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
Sorry about not signing in. I hate public speaking. My name is Jamie, J-A-M-I-E Gallagher, G-A-L-L-A-G-H-E-R. I live at 4065 Cody Street. And for those of you who know me, I speak in public literally all day long. I teach seventh grade math. But, you know, you guys are not shorter or younger and are less educated than I am. That's the beauty of seventh graders. I actually wanted to talk about the Lutheran legacy thing. And the first thing on my list was there seemed to be no provisions in any of the three plans for the church and the Blue House. I didn't realize all of the history of that Blue House. Sitting here is quite illuminating. That's one of my concerns, and I sort of bulleted because, you know, I teach math. One of the concerns is there are three circles as you exit those plans with zero explanation as to why two of them are yellow and one is red. The red one happens to have an arrow. The others have a circle terminating them. The terminating circle indicates that the traffic is to stop at that street, which makes total sense on 32nd. It can go nowhere, it's a dead end. You drive right into the cemetery in Crown Hill. The one at Balsam has an existing light and right now apparently is, is signed either right or left turn only. There is nothing at Cody Street. It is a standard intersection. That one is a red circle with an arrow going through it. My husband emailed and got some information on that. The plan is for a stoplight and to move the traffic from the stoplight down Cody Street, which makes almost no sense to me because Cody ends before 44th. It's a huge farm property between Carr and Dover, and it terminates. So they will get to the bottom of Cody and go, what's next? So, that concerns me greatly, and you heard my address was on Cody, right near the end of that street. Another thing is after you get across 38th Avenue, going north from those neighborhoods, you cross 44th Avenue, and there is nowhere to go. It's the highway. So I'm not certain why we're planning for a whole lot of traffic going north, but people do. I've lived there over 35 years. We have traffic from the hospital periodically coming through and sometimes at high rates of speed. But it's, it's a quiet street for the very most part. As I looked at the density, it's a neighborhood of single-family homes, and I'm not talking just my neighborhood, I'm talking the entire neighborhood around Wilmore Davis. It's single-family homes and a limited number of duplexes. And you're talking between 13 and 22 acres of multifamily housing. That is a huge increase in the density. And just as you increase that density, I'm concerned about the traffic on Wattsworth and Kipling. They're already horrendous and I've got a yellow light. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that hasn't signed up that would like to speak on our public's right to speak tonight? Okay, we will close that portion of our, our agenda. Thank you all for coming tonight to speak. We will now go to agenda item number one. And this is the, are we, are we going in order or...
We are. Mr. Demott is here, so...
Okay. Terrific, okay. This is the 2022 budget requests from the Wheat Ridge Business District, Local Works, and the Carnation Festival. And I believe we have Mr. Demott with us tonight. If you'd like to come on up to the podium and we'll go from there.
How you doing, everybody? I'll start with the Wheat Ridge Business District, if that's okay. I don't know how your packet goes, I didn't see it.
That's good.
But I can switch either way. Our, I think our budget for about 10 years now has been about $90,000 a year. We, if you don't know what the business district is, we give grants for businesses, facades, paint, landscape, ADA improvements. We do a lot of art murals. I should have brought it with me. There's about, we have about eight different grants that we give out. It's been around since 2003, and we, it's a matching grant, so you have to spend at least double what you spend. What we find is mostly it's about, it's about 20% of what each project is. So it, it doesn't really come to half, but most people will take that extra money and then hopefully parlay that into another, into another project. So we have half, $45,000 in our regular grant program, and $45,000 goes to our facade plus program, which is just a generally larger program, larger grant for a, more of a full-scale remodel or a full, a full building remodel, inside and out. And it's a graduated scale, they can get up to about 35, about 33,500 total on that grant. But it hasn't changed since, you know, for a lot of years, our funding level hasn't changed. It seems to be a pretty good level. I mean, we really never get any huge ones. I mean, we've never really had a surge any certain years, but we appreciate the funding. And if anybody has any questions, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. We'll open it up then from questions for council on the Wheat Ridge Business District. Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks. Could you just talk a little bit more about the mural project? Because there was a lot of murals that went up over the past year, so...
There was a what?
A lot of murals.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, our mural project was actually brought to us by our city treasurer, Chris Miller. And we give a, up to $2,500, that grant, we will actually pay 2,500, and they can pay as little as 500. So that's the only grant that we have that is not a 50/50, 50% or better grant. They, we've done on 38th and Teller, we've done Swiss Flower Shop.
West End 38th.
Well, oh, West End 38th, they did. So we gave them one grant, they ended up doing three murals from the same artist, they just kept going.
All Seasons Holiday Market?
Oh, yeah. All Seasons Market on 38th and Teller. I can't even remember. I've had a long weekend.
There's some, there's some more, they look good.
But, but it, it's a, it's a fun grant, it's, you know, we're getting to see a lot of, we don't do a lot of the choosing of the artists, we, we leave that up to the property and business owners, so it's fun to see what they choose. And it, we, I mean, we, we get an idea, so it's not anything weird or anything, but it's, it's turning out pretty good. We, right now, we only put 5,000 in the budget per year of that 45,000, just to see where it goes from there. And if, and if it, if we get more requests, we can always shift, you know, something or, I'd even come back here and ask you guys for more money, I'm pretty shameless about that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Hoppe.
Thanks for coming to talk to us tonight, Joe. Some other things that I'd just like to, I'm also on the board for the Wheat Ridge Business District, I've been there since 2010. Some of the other things that I'd like to just kind of highlight that are things that are unique to what we do in the business district is our older buildings in Wheat Ridge really were not ADA accessible. And it's, that's a very expensive cost to be able to upgrade your building to be ADA accessible. So the ADA accessibility grant is a big one that we do. And then the, like Joe was talking about, our, our facade plus program, some large projects that you could think of is the, the Barda House, which is on 38th Avenue, that was a facade plus program. I don't know if you remember what Raphael's Hair Studio looked like before, but now it's a gorgeous building that'll be a legacy building in our community. So what I can say is that from being on the board, we do a very good job of staying in our wheelhouse, not doing mission creep, and making sure that, that our, that the monies that we give as a board are being utilized successfully to help our brick and mortar. Because 10 years ago, when you drove around Wheat Ridge, you could see that our brick and mortar was in really desperate need of updating and upgrading, and, which is why the business district started. I'd also like to just mention that this is a reimbursement grant, so we don't just give the money to them and hope they get it done. They have to get it done first. They have to give us signed contracts, receipts, and things like that to be able to get the money back. So I do feel as a board that we're very good stewards of this money.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Joe, for all you have done, are doing, and will do for our community. So I, I want to just express, I've, I've tracked a lot of the projects and they've just made such a huge difference in our community. Like literally, you know, I, I drove my son to Compass while Raphael's was doing their improvement and just, things like that just make, one corner at a time, a huge difference. But I've been really excited about the mural program. I think that is incredibly good money spent, and I do hope you come back and ask for more.
We'll take more if you want.
And I'm just going to throw out there, any murals in District Two on 44th Avenue, I will cover half of the $500.
Excellent, okay.
So please let people know that.
And of course, anybody can send us ideas that, I mean, you know, I mean, we don't go to business owners and say, hey, really needs a facelift. But if you have a favorite business, go talk to them, and, I mean, we'll definitely go do site visits, we go talk to them and, you know, see, we'll introduce our grants personally to them and see what we can do. And, yeah, it's fun. I mean, it's, it is, actually, this is, the business district is a lot of fun, so...
Yeah, well, that's, that's how things get done in our city, is that type of relational work. So anyway, it's, it's really, it's doing a lot, the NRS that we adopted, you know, one of the things they really identified was working with our existing commercial building stock to reinvest in that as a principal economic driver. So, so it's making it good for people who already live here and making it better for the people who want to work here. So thanks, Joe.
Thanks. Yeah, and it is only for, it is not for new construction, so that is one thing. We don't do any new construction. This is just for, there isn't an age of building, but just existing buildings being upgraded.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Nosler Beck.
This is just a comment, but just to kind of connect how this all works together, one of the grant recipients was SIVCO, and I probably am still saying that wrong, but SIVCO is where we did our presentation for the All America City Awards. And so that investment in that business ultimately created this great partnership for us to ultimately win that award. So, awesome.
I didn't even know that.
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Joey. I just was wondering, do you spend down a majority of the money, and is there ever a situation where you do have to come back for more?
Oh, ma'am, we haven't had to, we haven't come back for, I think twenty-fourteen was the last time we've actually spent that money and had to ask for a little more. Yeah, I don't, it's funny, I mean, it's just forty-five thousand seems to be the number, it just kind of is, it's almost strange, I mean, it's, just seems to fit us, fit our group really good, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
So you're responsible with that.
Well, we haven't, you know, we haven't really given our admins a raise or anything, they, they work just on a percentage, it's been five percent since 2003, that's what our administration gets, and, you know, so, yeah, works out good.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Well, I'll chime in also, I sit on the board, and, and we have a very productive board, the members are listed on our, in our presentation. Joe, Joe keeps everybody on track, and I think the really important thing to, to look at this grant is it's, it's, it's improving the physical being in our city. So we've got landscaping, we've got painting, we've got facade upgrades, we've got electrical and lighting upgrades. All of this, all of this, you know, goes to the curb appeal of the businesses that we have, and really enhances the whole neighborhood and the whole view of the city, so. Thanks, Joe, for you and your, and your group.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. The, if we have no more, no more comments on this one, the Business District is asking for ninety thousand dollars, do we have consensus to move that forward into the budget? We do, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe, you've got another, another one here in the Carnation Festival? Are you the guy?
I'm gonna do this one too, yeah.
All right, well, before you get going, I want to, I want to say we just got done with the Carnation Festival, and, and great job, it's a really, it's a fun event this year.
Yeah, it was a good time.
Glad to be there, so, take it away.
All righty. Yeah, we just got done yesterday, matter of fact, there's still stuff in the park we need to get out tonight, so, just huge thanks to the Police Department, the Parks Department, the Public Works Department. You know, I'm, I'm here to talk about our budget, but, you know, we are, we like to keep it pretty tight, because we know that there is a lot of overtime and a lot of things that go on that, you know, I don't even see. So I don't even know, you know, all of the things that happen, but, so I just want to let you know, our board, you know, most of our board members, some of our board members have been on the board for forty-five years. So, you know, and we have, a lot of us are, you know, you know, pushing fifteen years together, so it's a really great diverse group from all the service clubs and everything, so we really try to tighten this up, but, you know, it wouldn't, it doesn't matter how much money you gave us, it wouldn't happen without the Police Department and the Parks Department and the Public Works Department, because they are literally twenty-four hours a day out there for us, and for you, and for the people in the city, it's absolutely amazing to see. You know, I'm there, I do a lot of work for about a week out of the year, but they do it every single day. And that park was beautiful this year, you know, I, you got a new Parks Director, and I'll have to see how she, she, how she fanned through the, through her first Carnation Festival, so I'm sure it was fun, but, you know, I'm sure they're having a lot of, a lot of talk, so, I appreciate you. But our budget this year, we are, like everybody, there was a lot of price increases this year that, some we saw coming and some we just didn't really see coming. You know, a lot of things, everything's up, everything, from renting the golf carts to the fences, to the porta-potties, to everything. And our festival grows, every year we had, we don't charge admission, it's free, you pay the admission, actually, in the city of Wheat Ridge. So our gauges go by our, what our service clubs, our Rotary, Optimist, Kiwanis Clubs, selling beer and pop and water, and, and we gauge it by our food vendors and stuff like that. All of them had a record year this year, it was, it was the best, and it, and it has been now for three years, it's a little better, a little better, this one was really good. So, you know, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit as well, the Carnation Festival, but we don't do what our Rotary and Optimist and Kiwanis Club do, they go out and they find scholarships and they find projects and things like that, so. What we try to do is create the environment for them to come and make some money to fund their programs that they, they meet every week or, you know, all year long to accomplish, so. You know, our board, we understand that, and we, you know, I mean, I, I sit on some good boards, this board is, we're a very good, tight board, and hopefully everybody's gonna do it for a long, long time, like twenty years, now you can't leave. So, I don't know where, we, you know, our spot, I can tell you some of the things that are down, that, why we're asking for an additional twenty-five thousand dollars this year. We haven't asked for more for quite a few years, while expenses have just sort of crept up a little bit, they did more than creep up this year. And we also had, as we approached, some of our sponsors that are year after year sponsors, their businesses were tight, I mean, or not, you know, some of them honestly not even there anymore, so, two of them that, you know, not there, just not in business anymore. But we still get, you know, incredible support from, you know, small, small, just residents, they want to donate twenty bucks, fifty bucks, it's amazing, you know, they still call. But our bigger sponsors, they just don't have it in their budgets to, to fund different things. So we're very thankful for all of them that did, and anything they can do, we appreciate, but we really want to just make sure we can cover these expenses as they grow and keep this festival going for as long as we can, forever. I mean, you know, it's, like you said, it's one of the, the, it's the longest continually running festival, one of the longest in the country, and, you know, we'd like to have our grandkids still saying that when they're here, having fun, so. I don't have anything in particular, I'd rather, I mean, I'm here for questions, if anybody has anything.
Very good, we'll open it up, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again, Joe, for being here for yet another volunteer position that you feel. I just, I have a question, do you, do you know the number of, I know that you, not only the service clubs, but then also like a lot of the high school clubs, so like the STEM, the football, the band, the, the Poms, the cheer, do you, how, like, how many of those, kind of like the, the high school clubs, do you give the opportunity for them to be able to come and, and do their fundraising piece? Like, how many checks are you writing out to them at the end of the weekend for their, for their boosters?
Well, I mean, over the years, we've, we've tended to count how many, like, we literally pay, it was, you know, sixteen or seventeen different clubs, service clubs, groups, we've actually law, kind of had to make subcommittees of them, so. Our car show on Sunday, all of that money, every penny of that goes to something in the schools, doesn't have to be Wheat Ridge High School or a Wheat Ridge School, we just sort of put it out, here's, this money is here, we have a committee that just solely works on that, and we sort of give them discretion on who gets that money, and what I say is, I need tables and chairs moved, and Friday night, I need kids here at midnight to wipe chairs and tables and change tablecloths, and if you send those kids, those groups of kids, football players, basketball, cheerleaders, wrestling, whoever comes, we will give them a portion of that money. So, you know, we probably, I honestly, I couldn't even tell you who, most of these kids, what, but they were there for, cheerleaders or basketballers, I mean, they were just there to help. And so of that, I think Renee said there was maybe eight different groups and teams and, and organizations in the schools, and Jefferson High School had some, you know, wrestlers that wanted to come down and help, and they called and said, what can we do? So, yeah, so I don't know the exact number, but, I mean, we're willing to always find something.
Great, and I just had one other question, under expenses, you have event administration, can you explain what that expense is? I feel like I haven't seen that expense before.
It's always in there.
Oh, okay.
It's, we sort of should break that down, we're talking as of, you know, we have, I'm gonna break that down, and I'll tell you how.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
Event administration, which is our marketing, so we don't have marketing in this, oh, we do have marketing, never mind, but that's our marketing and our advertising person, and they do the administration, the nonprofit things, they help with keeping the nonprofit status, our minutes, our bylaws and stuff like that. And then a lot of that is really what should be broken down into an event production. So it's a lot of our help or temp help or companies that, you know, the event companies that, that do, we rent the tents and chairs and tables and stuff from, you know, they don't put up lights, so I gotta get somebody else to do all the lighting, and then, just a weird incidental thing that come up, you know, when you have to turn a park into a event, it's just, you know, there's just a lot to it. I don't break it down until after the festival, we can really break down what we spent, but things change, and that's mainly what that, I would say the majority of that is, should be called event production, really.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Demott. You know, we have members of the Historical Society here today, and fifty-two years of Wheat Ridge, fifty-two years of the Carnation Festival, and I believe Hank Stites, my grandfather, was one of the people that started the Carnation Festival, and it's something that brings the city together every single year, and I think that that's important, and I think that's something we need to continue, that's a tradition that, there's not many other cities that can say that they have that, and there's a lot of value to that, and, and being there this weekend, there was a lot of people there, and, and, and I don't think anybody was unhappy, I think every single person there was, was, and I think that's a testament to the, to the board and everybody who's in charge of the festival. As a local business owner, I've been open for eleven years, we've done the festival every single year, because that helps us get into the community and, and meet, meet people, meet principals, meet teachers, it's, it's impressive to see, you, you walk around there and you've got kids from Prospect Valley, kids from Stevens, kids from Color Strand, everywhere, and, and that's really important that they see that and they get that, that small-town, that pride, because that's something that I remember as a kid, and something that makes me want to come back every single year, so, great job on the festival, and I, I think that you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments from council? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again, Joey. You know, I've spent the entire weekend with Joey and, and other members of our board, and I've had the honor of being parade chair for the last six years, and I will say that there is, it's a lot of work for all of us to put in our volunteer hours, and it's one really long weekend, but this is the best weekend of my year, every year, and, and I'm always so grateful for the folks that turn out to help volunteer year after year. Our Wheat Ridge Police Department, our Public Works, our Parks and Recreation, you know, there, there are some snafus here and there, but, you know, I contact city staff and I, and I contact members of the community, and they all show up and they help out, and it, like, it's just this camaraderie and this, and this, like, really high sense of community that I just appreciate about Wheat Ridge, and appreciate about the Carnation Festival. So I, I want to thank you again, and I had a great weekend, and the turnout was wonderful, and I really enjoy the parade and all of the schools and community organizations that come out and walk. When I first took over, we had no marching bands in the parade any longer, we incentivized marching bands to come back and participate by giving them a small donation, and we've continued that on for the last six years. And so, and we have anywhere from two to even five marching bands a year, depending on the year, and they, and those kids, they come out in their full uniforms, and they put on a show, and it is great to see them, and, and I, like, it's, every year, my kids and I, my family, like, they come from Lakewood, Inglewood, Denver, to, to celebrate Wheat Ridge, and it, it is quite the celebration, so thank you.
Yeah, great job with the parade, too. I think it was, it might have been the biggest, best attended that I've seen, there was a lot of people there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Very much.
I saved candy for the end.
Any additional questions or comments? Ms. Weaver.
I just wanted to comment as well, I just had such a good time, and I'm a relative new resident of Wheat Ridge, I guess I've been here eleven years now, and I giggle the entire weekend, Rachel can verify that, and this year, not only did I participate in the parade, but I added the pie contest, which gave me a whole nother level of understanding how much I love Wheat Ridge, so. It's, and, and then the fireworks, it's just, it's just so much fun, and I just love it, and I, I can't imagine, like, it just won me over, and, and I agree with you, Leah, it's just, it's my favorite weekend of the year.
Good.
So, thanks.
Thank you, and I might have jumped into the pie contest, it, literally the eleventh hour, when we were teetering on it, if we were even gonna have it, and.
Come on, anybody would have.
She said, you have to have it, you have to, and I said, here you go, let's do it. So I didn't even get over there, I mean, it's, it's so crazy, but I'm, I'm sure it was great.
We had a fun time, and I want to thank Counselor Stites for, for judging, he had a very tough job of judging pies.
And stuff.
Okay, any further discussion, Mr. Urban?
I'll move forward to consensus. I'll move forward to consensus that the city Wheat Ridge contribution be set at a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay, let's see, show of hands for that, looks like we have consensus to fund it at a hundred and twenty-five thousand for next year. Joe, we look for a great show, thanks so much.
All right, thanks, I could stand here and talk all night about the festival, but we're done, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all, and thank you, everybody who came.
Thank you.
All righty.
Okay, we have also on our agenda for this item, a presentation by Local Works, and we have Kate Cook here. Kate?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kate Cook, I'm with Local Works here in Wheat Ridge, our offices are located at, oh, I'll spell my last name, sorry, C-O-O-K-E, our offices are located at seventy-five thirty, West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, here in Wheat Ridge. So just a little bit of background, Local Works, as you know, was formed in 2005 to be a partner with the city of Wheat Ridge in the implementation of the first neighborhood revitalization strategies. We, I can't, mouse, ah, okay, good, so it rolls, right? I wasn't doing anything with clicking, okay, anyway, we, our, our work is guided by our Articles of Incorporation, which really call out the responsibility to increase investment in the community, deliver programs and events that increase community pride and increase the, the maintenance of homes and businesses, and we do all of that with, through this lens of connect, volunteer, and create, creating value, creating connections, creating opportunities to volunteer, and this is just, some pictures of some of the, the work that we accomplished this year, we sort of flexed our live local program to be porches and patios in light of the, that we couldn't get together indoors, we had our first community fridge through a quick nimble partnership put together with Community Resources, our Parks and Rec, and Wheat Ridge Poultry, our Chalk of the Town continued on, and we did another bubble loan, building up business loan for the Highlands Montessori preschool that's going into the old home collective. So some of our highlights for this year, we received a second PPP loan, we have moved our offices to a very, a good, a good partnership, so we've reduced our rent by about seventy-seven percent, we're now co-officing with the Wheat Ridge United Methodist Church, they're at Thirty-Eighth and basically Wadsworth, so that really puts us back on Thirty-Eighth, puts us in the community, seeing what's going on, being part of that. We've launched our volunteer database, really getting clear on engaging people in the community to volunteer and deliver those volunteers to, not just Local Works events, but also to other organizations here in Wheat Ridge. In, by the end of this year, we will have managed four TLC dumpster days, removing a total of about sixteen hundred yards of waste, we will have facilitated nineteen neighborhood dumpster grants, and those are, are small grants where we ask neighbors to get together, they get, they get a dumpster grant, not only do they meet their neighbors, but they then clean up their neighborhood. We organized five community cleanups, this was a new program that largely came out of the Let's Talk Neighborhood Planning process, where people said, hey, our corridors look a little rough, can you guys get some resources out there? This also, by putting resources. guys get some resources out there? This also, by putting resources, volunteers out there cleaning up those corridors, allowed the city to free up funds to use on other areas that need cleaning as well. We led four community cruiser rides, again, meeting those healthy eating, active living goals. And I mentioned the porches and patios. And we will deliver two community positioning events, the Criterion Bike Race, which is coming up on September 12th, and the Mid-Century Modern Home Tour, which celebrates all of the fabulous mid-century architecture here in Wheat Ridge. This year, we're asking for $390,000. That's an 11% decrease from 2021. And it's also a 25% reduction from our budget that was adopted in 2020. So we are on that path, consistent with our strategic plan to increase our revenue sources so that we're not completely dependent upon the city. The bubble loan will continue to be funded from the Local Works Investment Account. This loan product works well with the grant program that the Business District provides, also with the E-Step Program. It, you can use it for new construction. You can use it for interior renovation. You can use it for your fire systems. And that's what the Highlands Montessori did. So it's not, not limited to just exterior improvements. We are looking to increase our fundraising and our sponsorships. We've brought on a consultant to help us get really clear on our case statement and our development plan. And then they will be assisting us in writing grants. And we've started the process to create a maker space here in Wheat Ridge. And again, all of this is done with the goal to promote and position Wheat Ridge as a great place to live, work, and play. So looking at breaking that budget out, we have four line items that we typically bill to and organize our programs. So we have our core local programs, strategic plan investments, commercial corridors, and then our special events. And I'll just go through those really quick. And I promise, it won't all be words. There'll actually be pictures coming. So I just wanted to break this out really quick, really focusing that the building up business loan, loan program and the home improvement program will still be offered to the community and offered through the Local Works Investment Account. And pictures. Yay, finally. So as I mentioned, we flexed our Live Local program this year, starting in January, in February, when we would normally be putting that program together for the year, we didn't know if we were going to be able to be meeting indoors. We knew we could meet outdoors. And so we had done, worked with the city on the Business Reopening Assistance Program and thought, hey, let's celebrate all those new patios that came out. And we'll just have a whole summer of porches and patios. The fun thing here is it's really allowed Local Works, the Wheat Ridge Business Association, and the Chamber to really come together and work together on these programs. So it's a lot of fun. The businesses really enjoy this. And so we're still looking to get more residents to come. Residents are really busy this summer. So our next one will be at Clearfork Cider. We'll be celebrating their new cider garden. And also the Mestizo Food Truck will be there doing, we're doing a buy one, get one free taco. So that'll be kind of fun. We're, we're continuing our other ways of engaging the community, block parties. Our coffee break continues. Mayor Starper's wife, every week, provides us with an excellent joke. So it's a lot of fun. Please join us. You can hear her jokes. It's a lot of fun. We have all kinds of, of topics relevant to what's going on here in Wheat Ridge. It's a quick check-in. You're there, you say hi, and then get on with your day. We are a partner, again, in Wheat Ridge 101. This is sort of the, the growth out of the Wheaties program. We are adding a new session this year that starts pulling in all of our service groups. And so everybody's going to get their little 10 minutes of fame to talk about their impact in the community. And then Mary Ann and I are going to tie that back to what has been found in the resident survey and how these attendees can connect better with all of those service organizations in the community. So always growing, innovating our programming. Wrong way. Sorry. As you know, big piece of our core local programs is the TLC Dumpster Program. It's our TLC program in partnership with the Police Department. So it's the four dumpster days, it's the neighborhood grants, and the block parties. And so just some pictures of, of what we're doing. Again, that, the two pictures on the right-hand side are the new community corridor cleanup. So we've got quite, quite a few people involved in that process. Building up business loan program, again, the Highlands Montessori is a new business that's moving in. We've helped them with their sprinkler, sprinkler to bring them up to code. And again, we'll be offering these programs through the Local Works Investment Account. Strategic Plan, City Priority Programs are really around healthy eating, active living, and our volunteer engagement. Those are priorities for the city, priorities for the community. So we really focus that programming around getting our, our residents involved in healthy eating, active living. So a lot of free fitness in the park, cruiser rides, and then really finding those ways that people can get involved through volunteering. So it's not just volunteering at our events, but connecting them with Rotary. If Rotary's doing, fulfill the backpack program, they're always looking for volunteers. And we can become, we are serving as that conduit to connect all those different volunteer opportunities. I know. It's gonna be every time. I'm gonna go the wrong way. So commercial corridors, really focusing on not just 38th Avenue, but all of our commercial corridors citywide. So part of that is banners and lights. That's placemaking. That's a lot of that when you know that you've arrived in Wheat Ridge and you're not just still hanging out in Denver. Business outreach, connection, promotion. That's all the time that we spend working with our local businesses, promoting them, talking about what they do, connecting them with our residents, and then really using our marketing, social media, digital print, all of that to promote and position the community. So we started a new banner program this year. You might have seen it around town. It's a Rigid 38 Shop Local banner. It's kind of like a banner library. Any businesses on 38th have access to these banners. It's fun. Lana with All Seasons Holiday Market has them. And they pop up everywhere around the corridor. So it's kind of fun. We heard, again, through the Let's Talk Neighborhood Engagement Program, that a desire for a vacant storefronts program. And so we've done a little pilot program. We've got some murals there at Calvary, Calvary, Calvary Temple Church. Those are temporary. It's a small, little way to make a building look better for a short period of time. This one actually ends, it's gonna end up being there a little bit longer since things have changed for that property. We've got another one we're working on right now at Rally Bertos, looking to kind of make it look a little bit better than the spray paint, hey, we moved next door sign. So again, we continued on with Chalk of the Town. It's actually, that's going on now this week. It'll be the last week of Chalk of the Town. And special events. So special events are designed to really create place on 38th Avenue and bring the community together. So it's sort of a dual purpose, community celebration really focused on 38th. So the Criterion Bike Race, seven years, we've had the bike race, really looking at not just celebrating our great bike shops, but also bringing people to Wheat Ridge to see all of the businesses that we have on 38th. Because of the pandemic, we rescheduled the Criterion to the fall, which then impacted Rich Fest. So we canceled Rich Fest this year to have the Criterion. And then we'll, we'll bring all of that back next year. We will be moving trunk or treat back to 38th Avenue. So that's exciting. And it'll look a bit different because it has outgrown the green. So we're working with the businesses on 38th to probably line cars on 38th. We'll be working with the Police Department to make sure that the kids are crossing the street safely and all of that. We've had movies in the park. We've got another one coming up in September. We'll have a band at that one. And then holiday celebration with Santa and Mrs. Claus roaming around. We'll have the reindeer dancing tree, and of course, the tree lighting ceremony. So those are ways that we connect the community, bring value to, to the city. And, oh, I forgot to talk about the Maker Space. So the Maker Space is actually pretty exciting. This idea came out largely because of the work that was done around the Art Space Preliminary Analysis. When we were going through that process, we were up at Loveland, and we were looking at the fabulous Art Space project. So Art Space, as you know, is a company that builds affordable housing for artists. It's an amazing, amazing company. And we were there. And part of what works with that is a place where makers can make things. And so we were all there on that tour. And all of us on the committee had turned and looked at each other and said, whoa, we need one of these in Wheat Ridge. So a lot of things happened. We ended up having a generous tool donation. So now we, we actually own welding equipment, all kinds of hand tools, ceramic equipment, a treadle hammer. If you're into blacksmithing, we can help you out with that. And then we connected with Tinker Mill up in Longmont. And Tinker Mill is a Maker Space that's been in operation now for over 10 years to help us get this off the ground so that we don't have to reinvolve the will. They know how to do it. They can help us navigate this in a quick, efficient manner. So you're gonna see a lot of, a lot of stuff going on around that. So we've got our first meetup coming up next Tuesday. We're gonna be meeting at Stylist and Crate. There's a lot of, a lot of excitement. A lot of people just coming up to us. And we were at the Carnation Festival. Thank you for letting us be there. People love to talk about that. So it's pretty exciting. It's new. And it'll be an interesting journey as we move forward. That is what I have. So again, our goal is with everything that we do, we invest in the community, both financially and also through those connections. We connect our businesses and residents. And not really, when you talk about being in the lane, we're not the Chamber, we're not the business association. We really are the one who connects the businesses to the residents. And we can promote the businesses and celebrate them and do all of that and tell their story. Because that's what resonates with people when they decide who they're gonna do business with and continue to do business with. Again, with those goals of enhancing economic vitality and community engagement, and always, always looking at positioning and promoting Wheat Ridge as a great place to live, work, and play. So if you have any questions?
Okay, Kate. Thank you very much. We'll give you a minute to catch your breath and open it up to questions from council. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Kate, for the presentation. Could you tell me how much money you have in the Local Works Investment Fund currently, please?
Yes. We currently have 1.3 million, the same as we had last year. We have, we're through the process to be able to invest a portion of that. It's not as easy as you would think. So we're learning. But it will get invested. A portion. We want to keep some funds available, you know, just in case for operation. And we want to leave funds available for both the building up business loan program and the hip. So, but that rest of that money is really going to be used towards the creation of that maker space. So leveraging that to, to create that community space here in Wheat Ridge. So tools, facility, all of that. But it's not enough to do it all on our own. So we'll be looking at grants and partnerships and stuff like that to get, to get the maker space up and going.
Continue.
Just as a follow-up, how much did you invest in the bubble and hip loans last year?
So we had one hip inquiry. And we haven't really been able to sort of follow through on that. And we had one bubble loan. So again, I think what happens on the hip loan right now is it's a lot easier to roll those improvements into refinancing your house than to come to another agency and, and finance it. So we're looking at that. I'm curious if maybe a fit for the hip might be with the city's sustainability program on more of those efficiency improvements. So use, maybe scale it back. So we're looking at how can we get those funds out into the community on the home improvement side. The bubble loan, a lot of times, it's just where we fit with their financing. So, yeah. So Highlands, we fit really well in getting their sprinkler system up and going. It, it's capped at 15,000. So we're obviously one of many sources of funding for these small businesses that are doing the bigger projects. And we have two, two loans on the books. So now we have Highlands Montessori and Ormondale Beat.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen, and then Ms. Hoppy.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Kate. A couple of things. First of all, just again, thanks for your flexibility in the last year, as we've all adapted to unprecedented times. And it was just great that Local Works was working so hard to keep a presence and keep our community connected at an especially hard time. So that kind of resilience is, is to everyone's benefit. A couple of other just comments and then a question. You know, I was, I know every year, this conversation about Local Works' budget and programming is always an extensive conversation. And I think Local Works' commitment to diversifying its funding is really to everyone's benefit. And in part, I'm seeing the excitement around the maker space. And for that to really be something that Local Works is, is owning as its own. And, and obviously, there'll be a partnership with the city and other community members. But I'm excited to see, you know, the, the things that you're able to do when you're, you're creating your own space. So, so please get the, get the maker space here quickly. We need more welders in our community.
We're gonna have a pop-up welding event. So just stay, stay tuned for that.
I actually had someone offer to teach me to weld. And I almost took them up on it. But one thing that, you know, Local Works has been involved in, and you mentioned as a, as a success last year, was sort of reinvigorating some of the marketing presence around the ridge at 38th. City Council did identify at its retreat that we'd like to move forward implementation of the corridor plan, or at least solidify the corridor plan for 38th. And, you know, support from our business community for that is critical. It's gonna be really hard to advance any type of significant investments in that quarter if the business community isn't organized and, and in support of that. Can you speak a little bit more to Local Works' role right now in terms of working with those businesses and sort of helping with sort of that cohesive vision there?
All right. I realize as I breeze through this, in the very long and no-picture staff report that you have, it does talk about, we have recreated a 38th Avenue group to bring those businesses together and really start having those conversations about the plan, the vision, and how they can all work together. And, and I see Local Works as sort of a champion of that process. We can facilitate those meetings, provide that space to have that conversation, and, and really talk about how all the pieces start coming together. In my past life, I've worked with adopted corridor plans and have developed those plans. And if you don't have somebody championing it, it's really hard to keep the energy going. And I love 38th Avenue. I think it's got a funky kind of character to it. And I, I'm super happy to be part of an organization that can be part of implementing that vision. So I think we just keep inviting them, bringing them together. The Rigid 38 website is up. And I got a little behind because of the Carnation Festival, but I will get the events on there. But really understanding that that website is available for the business community on 38th Avenue. It's, it's their website. And, and just really using it to tell that story. So I think, Janice, thank you, Councilwoman Hoppy. That was really helpful to have sort of that background and history. So yeah, definitely a champion for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
Thanks for being here, Kate. I have a couple, I have like a, just one quick question and then some comments. So I did see in your, in your memo that you guys had reactivated the website. And I do know that when we went through that whole branding Rigid 38 process, that there were some tools that came out of it that are, that are probably gathering some dust, one of them being like an app. And then there, you know, some of it being some of like the, the visual marketing pieces. Do you guys have sort of a, a plan of how to move that forward? I, I guess I would say, in the past, what, what we had to do is like, actually physically walk the corridor and go and knock on doors and talk to people to get them to come and connect. And I know that that piece has been really difficult in the last 18 months, just because of where, what our whole world is going through. But do you have a plan to kind of reengage that type of process in the future for that?
Yeah. So actually, I got out and walked the corridor. So starting with the movies on the ridge and getting that messaging out there, not just, not just via email. So I, that's my goal, is to make sure that I'm getting out on the corridor. I've done the research on the app, and nobody knows anything about the app. So you and I need to talk some more about that. So yeah, I have dug around about, about that. So that could be definitely useful. I just, the status on that line. But, but definitely walking the corridor is important. And it gives you a sense of what the businesses are dealing with along the corridor. It gives you a sense, too, as they, you know, they're going through the redevelopment process, the challenges that they're dealing with as well.
And then my, just my comment is, almost 10 years ago, myself, Britta Fisher, and Tara John started Live Local. And we started that because what we realized was that there were a lot of businesses in our community that weren't necessary. our community that weren't necessarily drawing from our, drying as successfully from our community as they could while there was a changeover of people moving into our community also. And, um, so what that did is start to build social capital. And so what Local Works has been doing for a very long time is building social capital into our small businesses and our local-owned, independently-owned businesses. And I will tell you that social capital is probably the number one thing that kept our restaurants still open, that kept our hair salons still open, that kept our local, independent-owned businesses open in Wheat Ridge. Because we pride ourselves on being able to support and, um, and hold up our independent and locally-owned businesses. And, um, they, when the pandemic happened, they didn't have corporate offices cutting checks for them or with rooms full of lawyers to apply for the PPP loans. And, and as a community, our social capital kept them alive. And as a, a body, um, as City Council, when we, when we came up with the grant programs for those, it was our social capital to be able to reach out to those people to come and get these grants that we're offering for you. And so I would say that the one thing that I appreciate the most about Local Works is, is that strength that they build in our community.
Thank you. Uh, additional questions or, uh, Mr. States?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, as a local business owner, um, working with Local Works, um, through the community events and things like that, other than the Carnation Festival, there's not a whole lot of other events going on in Wheat Ridge. And, uh, the Ridge Fest, the Criterion, Movies at the Park, all that stuff, um, that's, that's one way as a, as a local business to, to actually get in and, and, and get to the community. And that's, that's very difficult. Otherwise, it's, it's thousands and thousands of dollars in direct mail and, and different things like that. So, um, having these events that the city puts on and Local Works puts on, um, is, is a big deal as a, as a business owner. So, um, that's something I appreciate. Um, the other thing, looking at your budget, last year I remember a much more awkward conversation, uh, frankly, um, that we weren't sure what the vision was, we weren't sure that the budget made sense. This looks like you guys have really taken our comments and our, um, feedback last year very seriously and, uh, put those into place and, and really got a little bit leaner and meaner as far as all that goes and, and the itemized budgets, things like that. That really helps to, to really look at the budget and see that it's, that it's all making sense. Um, and I do appreciate moving the trunk or treat back to 38th because...
It's going to be crazy.
Because, again, you know, as, as a business owner, I, I love being there giving out candy and all that stuff, but the idea was, and, and I think when Ms. Hoppy and, and, and the Harrs and everybody had originally put it on, was to drive people to those businesses, Right Coast and all the other, uh, uh, restaurants and stuff. And having it at Lutheran, unfortunately, while it's a lot of space, didn't, didn't necessarily help that. So I really appreciate that you guys have taken the feedback and, and done something with it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Additional discussion or questions? Uh, Ms. Nosler Becken.
Thanks, thanks Kate, so much. Um, just wanted to throw out, um, an idea for the upcoming events, um, until we're through the pandemic is, is making sure that we're coordinating with Jefferson County for Public Health on making sure that, um, there's maybe access to a vaccination site with some of our events or at least some public education about where we are. Hopefully we don't have to go back on to the, hopefully we stay in the clear mode that we're in right now, but, um, just use those events, um, to definitely get to like the fourth priority there. You know, I think educating folks about where we are in the midst of the pandemic and keeping everybody safe is, is a great opportunity at some of these events coming up.
That's a good idea, thanks.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Dozeman, and then Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you. Uh, so along with that, um, Local Works investment account and, and going towards a maker space, can you give us a little timeline as to when that's going to actually come to fruition?
Well, right now, we're in the process of building that community. So making sure, because the way a maker space operates is it operates off of the members of that, of that space. So you don't hire a welder to teach welding. You have someone who's passionate about welding and has that expertise and who's willing to teach that. So it's identifying those people. The next big thing is finding a space. So we are looking, our goal is, pretty quick. Um, Scott Converse with Tinker Mill thinks that if we stay on task and keep going, we should be able to do this in a year. Now, does that mean it will be 100% financially independent in a year? Probably not. It will have to grow because you grow that membership. But, um, I think if we're creative, there's, we're working on some different, you know, some different angles and trying to be creative and flexible. I have an amazing board that is truly visionary and looking at, you know, we need to crawl before we can run and let's get in there. Maybe it's some pop-up events, maybe, maybe we only have a little space to begin with, but we get, but we get it out there and we get it going. And I think that's, that's the push right now. And that's why you see the, um, the first meetup happening next week, which makes my eye twitch because that was after the Carnation Festival and Mid-Century Modern Home Tours that Saturday. But, but the thing was, if we don't do it, it would have been, oh, well, now it's Criterion. Oh, it's trunk or treat. Oh, it's holiday celebration and we would have been six months down the road. So biting the bullet and just getting going on it. So our goal is to get it up and getting, get it going. So join, come to the welding class.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as an FYI regarding, um, the interest in vaccinations, uh, Jepco, um, Action Center, okay, had a backpack pickup all last week at Stevens Elementary School. Jefferson County Health was present and giving vaccinations to any students that would want them. And they had, um, all three of the vaccinations there. So that would have been probably a good thing to have out there for people because they were there when the parade was going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask for consensus to move forward with 390...
Uh, Ms. Dozeman has a question or a...
Sorry, I just want to make a couple of comments before we move to the consensus because I, I will consent to this budget. I just, I want, and I want to preface, um, this, this criticism with compliments as to Local Works because I think you guys have done a great job over the years in connecting the community, holding and hosting events, um, and like, uh, Councilmember Saitz said, bringing, and, and connecting the business community to the residents. With that said, you know, last year was a little bit of an awkward conversation and I appreciate you bringing a trimmed-down budget and a line-item budget. But I, I have to say, you know, the last year and a half that our community has gone through COVID, I found it very difficult that one of our most prominent organizations that touted being a catalyst for community was sitting on 1.3 million dollars and not leveraging that at a time when our residents and our businesses really needed it. So I really hope that by this time next year where we're having these conversations, that we have done something with that money and that we have done something that really benefits the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask for consensus to fund in our 2022 budget, $390,000 for Local Works.
Okay, show of hands on that. Okay, we will move, uh, that amount of money onto the budget with a recommendation. Kate, thank you very much for a great presentation. We appreciate the work that your organization does. It's great to have you with us. Okay, I think we've completed agenda item number one. We're going to go to agenda item number two in just a moment. Okay, good. Well, we're going to move to our second agenda item. This is a Lutheran Legacy Campus Master Plan Update. Uh, we've got our planning folks here, Ken Johnstone and Lauren Mickelak, and take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, so we are in the homestretch, it feels like. Um, man, I can't stop and click at this. Um, we are nearing the homestretch of the Lutheran Master Plan. So we, you awarded this contract in January. Um, we last saw you in May, and in the last three months, we have done a lot of public outreach. You saw sort of the grocery list of events and activities and folks that we've gotten to reach out to over the last, over the summer. Um, as of this afternoon, we had 2,100 unique visitors to the project page. So it's gone up just in a few days since you've seen that memo. And tonight, I'm happy to reintroduce you to Jay Rankins. He's a principal with MIG Inc., the firm that we hired to help us facilitate this community process. Um, you met him in May and he's going to run through the slides, some of which we included in your packet, just so you have those for reference, um, and sort of lead a discussion of where we're going from here. In turn, a birthday.
Thank you, Lauren. Uh, thank you all for your time this evening. Really appreciate it. My name is Jay Rankins, R-E-N-K-E-N-S, uh, with MIG Inc. Um, we have an office in downtown Denver at 518 17th Street. Uh, so yeah, some of the information that you're going to see this evening actually is very hot off the presses because we just closed our, uh, engagement window around the preliminary alternatives, uh, for the site. And so I'll be able to share with you some of the things that we heard, uh, just, I guess, two weeks ago now, um, in, uh, I guess, or nearly two weeks ago, 13 days ago, in this room. Um, and then we had, uh, leveraging that What's Up Wheat Ridge site, uh, for 10-day engagement beyond that. Uh, so, uh, we'll do a quick introduction. Um, I do want to spend a little bit of time catching up on the visioning and key themes since, um, I have not been with you all since May. Uh, so that is sort of what teed up or fed into, uh, these preliminary site alternatives that I'll share, um, as well as then the community feedback around those. Uh, so this is just our locator map for everybody. Um, we have 38th up on the north edge there, Dudley on the west, um, sort of a combination of Allison Street, Court, and Zephyr on the east, and then 32nd on the south. Uh, one of the things that we really wanted to do at the outset of this process, and we've been sort of, uh, continuously, uh, sort of tapping into these, was looking at the NRS and some of the things that the community had indicated there that they would, would like to see just community-wide. Um, and then really thinking about this, uh, site in the context of a larger city in the region. When the structure plan was created as part of the comprehensive plan, uh, this was designated as a, a public space, quasi-public space with the blue, and then a, a major employment center. There was no contemplation really of, you know, the campus becoming anything else other than the hospital campus. And so this opportunity that the community has really embraced, I think, um, through saying what they want, what they don't want, what they like and they don't like, uh, but, you know, seeing it as an opportunity for, you know, most likely will not come along again in maybe even, you know, a generation or more, uh, for this community, uh, has been really neat to see. Uh, but we are ultimately wanting to, uh, you know, create this plan, uh, and we're calling it a development framework, uh, so kind of a high level similar to this but for the site. And then that would in turn lead to an update to the comprehensive plan, um, and which would allow other things to happen down the road. So Phase One and Phase Two is what I'll be speaking with you, uh, about this evening. Uh, Phase One, um, our engagement was pretty robust, as Lauren had mentioned. Uh, so surveys, uh, we had virtual meetings, we had in-person outdoor open houses, uh, we had, uh, briefings with you all, um, and focus groups. And, uh, ultimately, we heard from a lot of different people about what they wanted to see, what they didn't want to see, and what their vision was for the property. And hearing from those folks, some of those key takeaways included thinking about the existing buildings on the site and whether that be the Blue House, um, and the Chapel, uh, which we have heard about already this evening. And, you know, pretty much every time that we talk to the community, we hear about how important those facilities are to the community. Um, but also the existing medical facilities, uh, the medical, uh, medical office buildings, uh, behavioral health facilities. So people really wanted to say, you know, if possible, can that be incorporated into the future development in the site? People really being concerned about, uh, the possibility of this being something other than a campus, which a campus by nature tends to be a lot of open space with, you know, a handful of buildings. Um, and so if that's going to transition to something else, uh, people would really like to see the, any sort of density on the site, um, be very minimal at the edges, particularly adjacent to the single-family neighborhoods. And if there isn't, then some sort of density or development on the site, trying to focus more of that towards the center and up towards 38th. Uh, we heard about people wanting to not detract from or compete with 38th, but understanding that 38th, again, as we heard this evening, is kind of quirky and, you know, a great collection of, uh, local businesses, but it doesn't necessarily have that kind of downtown, you know, kind of feel. And so we've heard that from a few folks that, you know, would there be an opportunity maybe, not across 100 acres, which the site is, but in a, you know, few spots, uh, look for those opportunities. And then really thinking about community amenities, both using the existing photography of the site, the ditch, the beautiful trees, um, and then also would there be opportunities to introduce more of that? Uh, the business focus group focused a little bit more on, uh, thinking about the, the products that might come online here. Um, so they mentioned mixed use, uh, thinking about affordable housing, um, that there should be, whether it's publicly owned or not, but publicly accessible amenities to draw people to the site. And then also thinking about some funding mechanisms moving forward like historic tax credits, um, if, uh, any of the facilities were to be designated as historically in those. Uh, some of the common themes we heard across all of these different focus groups, which we've been doing, uh, basically around focus groups, uh, with each phase, um, looking at that den, density as I mentioned, compatibility to the adjacent neighborhoods, uh, trying to create some small mixed-use environment. I mean, it's a little tough because it's, uh, off of Wadsworth, uh, this part of 38th is starting to turn residential, obviously. Um, and so from a market standpoint, 38th is probably the best opportunity, um, but it's not a, it's not a huge opportunity, uh, just because of all the other things that are occurring nearby. Um, connections, people are really nervous about new connections, what those would look like, are there autos, um, allowed on those connections? And so in the, uh, preliminary alternatives that I'll share this evening, uh, we're really just, we're assessing these based on the existing access to the site. And then once we have a preferred alternative based on the community's input, we'll look at, are there, is there a need for additional ingress or egress? Uh, but I have a slide that shows that most of the things that we would even consider for the site, uh, actually would have probably less traffic than exists today. A hospital's a very intensive, uh, traffic generator, um, so that is a good thing. Uh, we had a public meeting, uh, back in early June, and there we were asking about different areas, uh, on the site. Um, if you look in the lower right, uh, corner of the screen, uh, we designated four zones generally, so, uh, the, uh, west edge along Dudley, um, then we have zone, well, zone two would be up along 38th, north of the ditch, um, where the existing hospital sits. There's a series of medical office buildings just north of the ditch, uh, elevated up above. Uh, that's zone three, along with the parking lots. And then zone four would be the properties on, along the east edge extending from 38th down to 32nd. So in zone one, generally people said that they would support open space, uh, maybe some single-family homes and then duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes being, and in that order as well, is what people were interested in seeing. In zone two, where the existing hospital sits, uh, it was looking at, uh, again, parks and open space, but really more, uh, civic, office, entertainment, uh, kind of dining, retail, and then to lesser degree, uh, but the most of any residential product that was supported were apartments and condominiums. In zone three, uh, again, where the medical office buildings are and the large service parking lot, kind of in the middle of the site, uh, people, again, were, uh, identifying civic or office as an opportunity, uh, maybe some open space as well as dining and entertainment to a lesser degree. And then finally, zone four, uh, open space, uh, single-family homes and duplexes and triplexes and townhomes were identified, so a residential mix. Key themes from that Phase One engagement, and these really informed then the development of alternatives, which we'll look at for the rest of the presentation. Um, thinking about the history of this campus and how whatever happens needs to sort of respect that, respect the community and be additive to the community, not something that becomes, uh, an eyesore detriment in a way. Um, opportunity to create a center for the community, um, and really that sort of gravitated more towards the civic and cultural uses. And if there could be, you know, some, a coffee shop, a few restaurants and things like that, maybe as part of that destination mix, uh, people are supportive of that. Desire for parks, open space, and buffers with the adjacent neighborhoods, um, both concern and desire for the housing and increased connectivity. So even at the meeting that we just had two weeks ago, I had people come up to me and they said, "Why isn't there more multifamily?" And then someone else would come up to me about three minutes later and they'd say, "Why is there multifamily on here at all?" And so there are very diverse opinions about, sort of, the... And so, there are very diverse opinions about sort of the future of the site and what is and is not appropriate. And then, again, that excitement for some maybe locally-serving retail dining and entertainment. So, the preliminary alternatives. I'm going to tell you a little bit about some of the things that went into those, and then we'll walk through those and I'll give you a summary of the feedback. So, a few things to consider are the existing regulatory considerations and the charter. There's the height limits around new residential and new non-residential development, thirty-five feet and fifty feet respectively. We have looked at the height restrictions because of the existing hospital facilities, exceed that fifty-foot non-commercial, or sorry, non-residential limit. And if they were to be adaptively reused, then those height limits wouldn't apply. It's only for new construction. So, it could be residential or office, civic, anything could go in those without having to lower the height, obviously. And then, looking at the, in the charter also, the maximum density would be twenty-one units per acre. At a hundred acres, that would be twenty-one hundred units. We, as a thought exercise, tried to even place that many units on the site, and it's next to impossible to do so. So, you won't see anything approaching that in the presentation from here on out. The non-developable area that we want to be thinking about, the foothills medical office buildings are not controlled by SCL Health. There is a real estate investment trust that maintains and operates those. They're kind of sitting back and kind of watching everything happen. So, we're trying to think about what a future of those could be at some point. But, again, less controlled, not an active partner like SCL Health. The ditch takes up a good amount of space and is a, you know, can be even better amenity, we think, for the site. And so, that's integrated into all of these. Looking at the major roadways, just looking at sort of the real estate that's supported those with the sidewalk kind of pathway facilities, the roads themselves, ends up being about seven and a half acres. The north tower of the newer hospital facilities seems to have the most potential for adaptive reuse. There's actually portions of that building that have never been built out yet. They're in shell condition. Some of the other facilities are older, more dated. Utilities and whatnot make those challenging, not to say that they couldn't be adaptive reused. And then, of course, we've heard about the Blue House and the Chapel being of very high value to the community. And so, all of our alternatives, they have different colors in that area, but none of them would say, actually, that those stay or go. It won't preclude either of those options. So then, finally, there's about seventy acres that we're looking at on the hundred that could be in play for redevelopment. What the market says, and we wanted to make sure that these were at least market accurate, you know, market-driven. So, looking at residential, as we all know, around the Denver metro area, pretty much any residential that's built will be bought or rented. So, we could go off to that twenty-one hundred units, as I said. We have not done that in any of the scenarios. Retail and commercial, limited demand, pretty small, about fifty thousand square feet. And again, we don't want to compete with what's on Thirty-Eighth or Wadsworth. Office and employment, there doesn't seem, it's not to say that it could not happen, but it seems very unlikely, based on our market analyst's input, that there'd be one big office user or corporate user to come and, you know, fill the campus. More than likely, it'd be smaller office tenants, probably filling about the space that those medical office buildings take up right now. And then, finally, maintaining this employment legacy, again, a little bit of a challenge to think about the site entirely as employment. And I don't even know if that necessarily aligns with the input from the NRS to me about additional, you know, neighborhoods and diversity of housing options. But, health, sort of offshoot, continuing of care, could be confidential use, civic employment, maybe something building on the agricultural or culinary uses. And then, I mentioned that traffic earlier. So, the existing condition has about twelve-hundred-and-seventy-five cars in AMP, sixteen-hundred cars in the PMP. So, we looked at what if you packed as many, just a worst-case scenario, what if you packed as many housing units across the site as was impossible? And it ends up actually generating less traffic in that situation. Would those cars be coming and going at slightly different times than they do now? Yes, absolutely. But, this is looking specifically at AMP, PMP, which is when residential traffic tends to be the highest. We know that as we move forward in creating a preferred framework plan and look at some illustrative sort of development options for the site, that we will need to take further consideration of the transportation connectivity. So, those include looking at different intersections and how they're operating today. Do they work the same when it's not a hospital use? Would there be necessary improvements? Looking at potential access to the site. Folks have mentioned, both positively and negatively, this example of thinking about Thirty-Fifth and Dudley. Some people have been supportive of that would be a kind of pedestrian and bicycle connection. They don't want to see new roads way there. Looking at transportation demand management, how can we reduce the number of trips being taken by cars? So, looking at transit and some of these other pieces. Looking at connectivity for bike and pedestrians, as we said, and looking at bus stop conditions. So, it was thirteen days ago, we presented these three alternatives to a group of about a hundred people in this room. And we'll zoom in on each of those in a second, but just wanted you to know all the different ways that we've sought input on these. So, the steering committee, which has been meeting with us pure about every four to five weeks throughout the process. We did another round of focus groups with business focus groups, as well as two community focus groups. The public meeting, What's Up Wheat Ridge? And then, the study sessions this week. We're meeting with planning commission on Thursday as well. We took a lot of different notes about these different alternatives, things that people liked, that didn't like, some new ideas that people wanted to roll in. At that public meeting, as I mentioned, over a hundred attendees on August third. And then, on the online survey that was open for about seven days after that, we had another hundred-and-sixty-four respondents. When you look at that, we have the vast majority reporting that they live in Wheat Ridge. We had slightly more females, pretty large, white respondent pool. And then, the survey really focused on preferred concepts and trade-offs. But, one thing I wanted to point out before we move on to, you know, the alternatives and some of the feedback. The tenure in Wheat Ridge, really great diversity. Some of our earlier outreach, we were hearing mainly from people who had been here a long time, which is great. They're invested in the community, they have that institutional knowledge. But I think we did a better job in the second phase getting more diversity in those responses. So, Concept A, and all these different bubbles are going to represent different things here. So, orange on all of the different diagrams are multifamily. The hatch, kind of darker yellow are townhomes. The light yellow are low-density residential areas, so basically, single-family homes. Green would be different types of parks, the blue civic space. And then, we have this kind of pink color that's mixed use. And then, anything that's remaining as an existing, or in its existing state, in an alternative is indicating break. And so, the two facilities, the medical office building up to the north here, and then the hospice down the south, SCL Health has determined that those will be staying in their existing use. The behavioral health facility has not been determined one way or the other yet, so we tried to show them a variety of different alternatives. So, in this first option, it does exist in its current state. We're then generally showing a lower-density housing product transitioning from the neighborhood to townhomes to a civic core in this particular concept. And then, really focusing retail and mixed use up along Thirty-Eighth, trying to pull a little bit of that energy from Thirty-Eighth, extend it a little further down west here. I think I hit most of these viewpoints. One thing is that we, you know, in all of these, there'd be different types of open spaces, different scales, but placemaking would be a really key piece of this. And folks have told us that they want to create new connections and connectivity to existing open space nearby. And so, thinking about that as we move forward as well. Right now, you're seeing bubbles on our map, but we'll be thinking about some of those key connections, particularly from a framework level, that we want to articulate in the plan. This is just another view here, and I'll give it to you one more time, shows some kind of photo examples of the different kind of development types that we might see. So, this is looking, we're kind of flying above, cemetery here, looking northwest. So, again, this particular concept really focuses civic in the center, retail kind of destination on Thirty-Eighth, and then transitioning from lower-density residential to sort of the higher-density residential, moving north with multifamily being on the existing hospital footprint. So, what do people like and not like about this particular concept? People really like the parks and open space along the ditch. They like that idea of trying to expand some of the ditch open space, augment that with additional parks. People liked the large central civic space, but we did hear from some folks thinking maybe it was too large. We didn't want a spot. People are articulated right in the center of the hundred acres that might not be active, you know, outside of maybe like the eight-to-five or something like that. We think that something of this scale would definitely need, would have some outdoor event space and programmability as well. People liked the active mixed use along Thirty-Eighth, but then some other folks thought that that might be too intensive of a use adjacent to the residential just north of that. So, we heard things like, "Don't do that at all." We also heard, you know, right now, the existing buildings aren't right up on the sidewalk. They're sort of set back a bit, and maybe taking some cues from there, so it's not sort of imposing on the neighborhood. And then, some folks, and this was sort of a blanket, because you're going to see some retailer mixed use in all three concepts, some concern that we have vacancy in retail spaces around Wheat Ridge now, and why would we be creating additional retail space that might, you know, contribute to that problem or just detract from the ability to fill those existing spaces. Concept B, and there's three here, A, B, and C. We have lower-density residential in this whole portion down here. Again, the existing facility with hospice and the medical office building here. Looking at multifamily in this middle portion with a small piece of office and civic use. This was driven by, not to say that they have to be the existing buildings, but sort of thinking about, could those be adaptively reused as office buildings or civic space? And then, really, sort of the rest of the site, having townhomes along the edges with two community-sized parks. Those tend to be about five acres. We're showing a four-acre and a six-acre here, community park, serving each of these neighborhoods flanking the site. And then, mixed use up to the north. Did want to clarify, we've gotten a lot of questions about mixed use up to this particular site, working with our market analyst. They've indicated that there could, there's an opportunity to maybe do a little bit of vertically-integrated mixed use. But, we're not talking about a big mixed-use district with, you know, two-hundred, three-hundred-foot blocks, you know, and every corner has a coffee shop. This would probably be horizontally-mixed use. So, some commercial, some office, a handful of retail spaces with multifamily, most likely being a piece of that as well. So, go through those images again. View photo precedence here, a smaller civic office presence of note. Looking at those parks kind of being dumbbells along the ditch, and really using those to kind of tie the redevelopment of the campus together with the surrounding neighborhoods, if you kind of think about it that way. And so, what do people like and not like about Concept B? Again, some folks really like the idea of mixed use along Thirty-Eighth. They like the fact that the density in this, you know, it's kind of inherent in mixed-use development and multifamily, was in the center or the center and north on the site. Some people did not like the townhome idea immediately adjacent to the existing single-family detached neighborhoods. Some folks thought that there was an imbalance of housing and all these other assets. We heard that both for and sort of against the amount of area devoted to housing in this concept. And then, some people thought that there is a lack of connectivity, and were concerned that this particular concept would require a lot of new connections to the existing neighborhoods, and they didn't really want to see those. So, our last concept is Concept C, has a large multifamily area in the center, flanking the ditch. And so, the ditch would actually be kind of an amenity tying those together, still linking to two parks, similar scale. These are both about four acres on the edges, actually providing that buffer from the existing neighborhoods to what would be, in this case, either retail in that upper right corner or multifamily, kind of in the center part of the portion of the site. Stepping up in density again, we've been hearing all along, this idea of stepping up from the existing neighborhood. So, this actually put single-family homes next to the existing single-family homes before transitioning to townhomes, and then ultimately multifamily in the middle of the site. Civic and office up on Thirty-Eighth, and then trying to create a small, those two kind of red sausage shapes there, pill shapes, those would be trying to create sort of a double-loaded kind of Main Street feel, just for, again, a handful of businesses, maybe a few restaurants, a coffee shop, maybe a couple, I don't know, services, like a daycare, that sort of thing. So, just jumping ahead here to what we've heard. So, what people liked and they didn't like. Some people really liked the idea of the Main Street along Lutheran Parkway, trying to achieve that. People liked the parks being the buffer to the existing neighborhoods, looking at density concentrated in the center and stepping down into edges. And they also liked, which was interesting, because we had some people, everyone has been advocating for some sort of a civic presence on the site. Some people really like it in the middle of the site, and a lot of other folks have indicated they like it along Thirty-Eighth, something that might be a little more prominent, maybe not, you know, feeling more public-oriented than maybe something that might be, you know, tucked in to the middle. Dislikes, some people thought that the Rocky Mountain ditch green connector should be extended even further, that there's too much multifamily perhaps in this concept. Some people didn't like the amount of open space, again, thinking that's too little. And then, they didn't like, as I said, some people did not like the focus of civic and offices along Thirty-Eighth, even though some people said that they did. One last thing, and then I will stop, and I think Lauren, Kent, and I can all answer questions. But, one last thing that we asked about was the willingness for trade-offs on the site. We've been hearing a lot of interest in large park space and civic space. And typically, a development would not be, you know, required to provide the amount that people are hoping for. And so, one of the things that we've broached is, well, would the community be open to some, maybe more density in certain parts of the site as a trade-off for community amenities, particularly open space and parks and whatnot? And we asked the question, tying those two specifically together, additional height? And we just tried to make it really simple, just talking height, for community space? And we said, "No additional height for, you know, no additional community space, low, medium, and high." And the vast majority of folks actually indicated medium, which was of interest to us. Like, we weren't, we weren't sure where people were at. We'd been sort of having the conversations, and people had suggested to us to think about. And so, I thought that was a really interesting takeaway. Where would folks want to see that, whether they said low, medium, or high on the previous question? And it was Zones Three and Two. This one was a little surprising to me. I really thought Zone Two, because of the existing height of those buildings, being a little over a hundred feet, that's where folks would say, "Hey, that's where the additional height should be." But, Zone Three actually received a decent amount of support as well. When we looked at all hundred-or-so folks at the community meeting, as well as a hundred-and-sixty-four who responded to the What's Up Wheat Ridge. And then, this is just to, really just demonstrate to you that we're going to start to investigate what that might look like as part of a framework plan. This idea of, you know, how do we, in the plan, articulate this trade-off? And where might height be appropriate? It's interesting, because the site is so large, this top diagram is looking all the way from Thirty-Second to Thirty-Eighth, a cross-section from the north, or from south to north. And then, this just breaks it into two parts here. So, this one in the middle is this portion to the ditch. And then, the bottom one is the ditch to Thirty-Eighth and the existing single-family neighborhoods here. Because of the topography of this site, it's actually like- Because of the topography, this site is actually about 50-foot difference of elevation as you move through the site, and most of that is at the ditch, is where the change is. And so one of the things we want to explore with this steering committee, bring back to the community, is with their indication of those zones two and three being the place to explore any sort of additional height, what might that look like? How can that work with the topography of this site to not accentuate it, but actually perhaps height it a little bit from the surrounding neighborhoods and the neighbors? And then last slide here, additional considerations. Again, people really like this idea of tapering down regardless of what the alternative is that ultimately moves forward, and it'll be some hybrid of the concepts. Allowing more height seems to be least worthy of exploration, again, but being really strategic about where that might go and what the community is, if there's a benefit for that. Looking at diversity of housing, we heard in the community meeting in particular, I think more strongly than in the past, this idea of multi-generational housing opportunities, seniors, young families, young professionals. Looking at things that would attract visitors, maintaining the small-town feel again, regardless of which concept or preferred concept moves forward. Looking at gardens being incorporated more and then thinking about homeownership opportunities. And again, I did, I know that there's several folks from the Historical Society here tonight too, so we did hear loud and clear, and I preserved the historical elements of the site. And our boundary stops at 38th. Definitely heard about the former admin offices of the scene as well, but the Blue House and the chapel will be articulated as these community values in the plan and something that the community would like to see be part of that development as it moves forward. So with that, I will stop, and turn it back up to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Oh, okay. So thank you very much. Good presentation, a lot of, a lot of information there. Then we've got Ken and Lauren, and we can open it up for questions from council. Okay, we'll start with Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would just, thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough. I was a little disappointed that I, we didn't have the likes and dislikes and some of those other considerations in our packet. I think that would have been really helpful to see from our end. One question I did have is, what is the determining factor of whether the behavioral health West Pines will stay or not? Because I think it's a significant need in our community, but it doesn't necessarily fit, like, because of the nature of the facility, it may not fit within, you know, a family park kind of concept.
So I'll take the first part. We would have loved to have that for you two. The survey closed sort of a day or two before we did the packet, so we've been digesting it until probably this morning to summarize that, but we can send that updated version out so that you have that for reference. In terms of West Pines, SCL assures us that they will make a decision before our final public meeting on September 22nd, but it's, it's sort of wholly within their court to make that decision. They haven't shared with us sort of what they're considering or not at this point.
What, the conversations I've had with, with some of the leadership is, they, they understand that, that, that's a huge need in their, in their system, and if it leaves this campus, it'll, it'll be replaced in a, in another location in their system. So it's, the, the resource will not go away, may not end up in we urge, but we just don't know yet.
I, I think the other thing they've shared with us is that in a perfect world, it would be fairly proximate to an actual hospital for a variety of reasons, so that's a challenge that they're, they're struggling with.
The building's quite old and, and needs a lot of work. I know they, one thought was to totally rebuild it onsite too, so I think there's still some options.
One, one more thing I could add is, in our most recent conversations with them about the West Pines facility, they're hopeful that by the time the plan is actually before you all for adoption, that they'll, they'll know on the future of that facility.
Thank you, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that thorough presentation. Just want to also thank you for doing such a good job working with our community, both with the stakeholder group and the community outreach. That's an impressive number. The survey was long. It was not a short one, and so I just really am excited to hear so many people took the time to, to get that kind of feedback. I have a couple comments and then a question. One is, please, please, please take seriously converting 35th Avenue as an active transportation corridor. It's really, I rode my bike here, I ride through Lutheran Campus to get here. There are not enough good east-west connectors in our community, and 35th Avenue, I mean, it doesn't actually go through from Wadsworth, but it is one of the, the east-west connectors that is safe for people to walk and bike. So please keep that as a, as a priority. I, I will just say, I really like the idea of a small neighborhood commercial center. I realize that we do have some vacant storefronts now, but this would be coming online, you know, several years from now, and one of the outcomes from the neighborhood revitalization study was really wanting more of that thing you can walk to in your neighborhood, go grab coffee and connect with your community. So I think that's important, you know, both just as an amenity, but also as part of something that's been identified citywide is important. And then I also kind of like the civic space on 38th that feels more accessible to the whole community and not kind of embedded within the campus. I think we, as a city, really value our civic spaces. We're, we're a small town that likes to hang out. So, so if that space can be somewhere that feels a little bit more accessible to people outside of, like, you, you said it early that maintaining the campus feel was something that came forward, and, and if you're maintaining kind of the campus feel, if that civic space is embedded within it, it might not feel as accessible to the rest of the community. So those are my, my comments. I'm sort of curious on the attainable housing approach. With, with what this will look like when it is, is finally through this process and ready to come to council, what, what kind of tools or recommendations can be baked into it to help ensure that we do have attainable housing across generations as part of the, you know, other than just zoning for, for density?
Well, certainly, and Jay, you can, you can help me in terms of how much of a priority you believe that has been articulated as part of the, the planning process? I think, I know we've heard it, I just don't know to, to what extent, but if we've heard it to the extent that we think it should be a policy recommendation in, in this master plan, then certainly it should be and can be. In terms of how you get that product at the end of the day, it certainly could be something. You know, I think Jay had a helpful slide there about trade-offs, and those trade-offs are ultimately going to be articulated and likely in a zoning document. You know, I think, I think we all know that ultimately this property is zoned, planned hospitals, that's all you can do on it. So it, it likely will be considered for rezoning down the road for it to be developed, and certainly something that you could, that you could cook into a, a planned district, a planned mixed-use district zoning requirement. We haven't done that before, so that would be new territory for us to chart, but it certainly would not be precluded if that's a priority.
Yeah, I think this is, I mean, a really unique opportunity. We, we as a city haven't had any type of attainable or inclusionary housing, you know, ways of sort of capturing the development interests that we've had the last couple of years. So I think this is a, a very unique opportunity for us to be able to capitalize on sort of a more comprehensive zoning approach that's really heavy on housing and residential, to be able to look at whether it's in, you know, in lieu of or different like incentives and trade-offs that we can do to ensure that there are opportunities for people to, to, you know, call Wheat Ridge home, you know, across all, all incomes. So, you know, and that's something that, you know, mayor may, I don't know how thick it is in terms of the community preference, but it's something we've been hearing in the city citywide, and every time we look at where to put it, no one, no one really wants it anywhere. So I think this is an opportunity to sort of thoughtfully bake it in. So I, I hope that that's something that we can, we can figure out how to make that work in this plan.
And, and the community has been pretty vocal about wanting a mix of price points and building in that affordability and attainability. I think it's, it's great as a tribute to the, the community members, best practices would be, say, do mixed income kind of product, and people aren't necessarily using the terminology, but that's what they're talking about, opportunities to own, to rent, different price points, market rate, and, you know, subsidize in some way. So yes, absolutely.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Also, thank you to all of our community members who have been a part of the conversation to get us to this point. I just have a, first off, I completely agree with Councilwoman Hulteen on the attainable, attainable housing, and, and on top of that, hopefully some sustainable housing also. On Concept C, there is, in one of those little retail, looks like a little hot tamale, there's the, there's the little green star that says "community gathering." That green star is quite close to where the Blue House is, and so I'm wondering if in this concept, the, sorry, the map with the, the map with the, with the bells and the stars and the, there we go. So the little green star, which signifies community gathering, it's, it's very close to the Blue House that the Historical Society is asking us to, to try to preserve. And so I'm just wondering if in this concept, do we feel like that would be something that we'd be able to be attained in saving the historical piece with that?
Yeah, I, I can't speak to obtaining the house, but this was at, or did you say retain?
Retaining, yeah.
Yeah, so, and this, it's actually in the legend, it's adaptive reuse, so the idea was that that would could be.
Sorry, the green dot is actually the, the little.
Oh, up here, yes, yes.
Yeah, right there.
You're right, yep. Yeah, so the idea, though, conceptually in this one, is that the Blue House could be part of that Main Street environment.
Super.
The chapel's right there, too.
Yeah. Super. And then I just wanted to ask, like, what, so I, I do actually quite like this concept quite a bit, but what, what, if, if this is not the, the concept that rises to the top, what is there, like, is there anything that we can do to try to maintain the Blue House and the chapel? Is there any, anything we can do, is like, I mean, we don't own the land, we don't own those buildings, so is there something we could do?
I'll, I'll take a shot at that, Ms. Hoppe. We've certainly heard loud and clear from the people in the room and, you know, people along the way through this, through this process, that people value these as, as assets of the community, in particular the chapel and of course the Blue House, and they have significant value just as community assets and also historic value, right? With their ties to the tuberculosis situation as people made comments too. So I think it's safe to say that this document, at this high level, this master planning document, will say just that, that it's the strong desire of the community through this plan adoption that will ultimately be, be adopted by council to seek, you know, any and all ways to preserve these, these assets for the community. It, it's not without its challenges, right? Because, you know, I mean, not to get too far in the weeds, but, you know, you've got to find uses for them, right? And owners, and you've got to be cognizant of operating costs down the road, and, you know, how are you going to use them? The chapel is also, you know, tied into the central utility plant, which if the north tower goes away, which it could, then, you know, you need all new mechanical systems for the, for the chapel. So lots of discussions down the road in terms of looking for opportunities for partnerships, for sure. So I think at this master planning level, it would be our desire to just make sure that the document reflects what we've heard and what we're, I think, hearing from, from you all as well, that those are assets of the, of the community, that we want to do everything we can to work to preserve.
Yeah, absolutely, yep. I, I grew up in, I've been in Wheat Ridge since 2011, but I grew up in historical neighborhood in Denver. And what I do understand is that Wheat Ridge being as young as it is, it hasn't had the opportunity to have the historical pieces that some of our neighboring communities have. And I, I understand the, the, the need to, to want to keep that as a priority, and so, you know, I do hope that that works out through our process. Thanks for keeping that in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I'm looking at the key themes from the visioning phase, the importance of the history and legacy of the campus, I hear the talk about what we're saying, but when we're addressing the Blue House and the chapel and any other structures, I think it should be written down. So, because then when I look at the part where the business, what, what their interests were, they were interested in possible historic tax credits. So what would that mean? Where's this historic tax credits coming from, for what properties? And then also, it was discussed, the north tower. There is not a concept up there that would show the north tower existing.
They all do, actually. So, so these are the used apartments? So these are now actually speaking to what buildings are there? So they all could work with or without existing buildings?
Because that is the newest part of the hospital, and it's true, it's not used, six floors vacant, all that. I worked there for 30 years, so I know the whole lay of the land. And, but also the idea of history, there are old places in Wheat Ridge, and this is part, the whole thing with the TV sanitarium and all that is very important to Wheat Ridge and to people who have lived here for a long time. So the chapel's pristine. I don't know, the Blue House, all old houses need to have some fix-up. We could get, you know, Rehab Addict in here, and she could fix it in a minute. So those are valuable places that, yes, they could be reused. And also, at the last community meeting, people stood up and were speaking about reusing part of the hospital for maybe research, okay? Marketing for places that do research. SCL does not do research, but other places do research where maybe they would need to have a building like that. So just to reuse what we have instead of just this, you know, and it's gone, because it's good architecture, I mean, it's sturdy, so, you know, I've been through the whole place, so I know how it is and stuff. So it's a good building, and it's a good-looking building. But right across 38th Avenue is all residential, okay? So if you're going to put in commercial over there on, on the south side, that can interfere with the people who are living there and have lived there, and that's a consideration for me, and I think people who live around there. Because I don't know where else is the big commercial kind of areas where residential's right across the street. Not very many, maybe 44th? Not very much, you know, commercial going on here. So that's just my point. I would like to see some of this property being saved or reused in some way, and it probably would be cheaper in the long run, and use it up, wear it out, make it do or do without, is what I think. That's a prairie rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I forgot to ask the question, to see if you could address the, the comment about the traffic at Cody. The, all of, so all of the concepts, and they have the, the red circle around, you know, pointing towards Cody. Can you just kind of address that? So it was the.
I think the.
Yeah, so it's the arrow? Yeah, that one.
It was a question of the symbology, so that intersection where the cursor is shown as an arrow and the other two, 32nd and 38th, they're shown as circles. 32nd and the, is it Balsam? You're not allowed currently to go straight, right? 32nd is the dead end, and then Balsam, that intersection's actually designed to, to try to preclude you from going north, but Cody is currently designed to allow turning in any direction. So there's not, what we have not done at all at this point in time is suggest what those should be, because we need to figure out what the land use concept is, and that will inform what, if any, traffic reconfigurations would need to happen.
So it's not necessarily that you're suggesting traffic should go through.
No, it's how it is currently.
I think the question of here.
Yeah, so, it's the arrow? Yeah, that one.
It was a question of the symbology, so that intersection where the cursor is shown as an arrow and the other two, 32nd and 38th, are shown as circles. 32nd and the, is it Balsam? You're not allowed currently to go straight, right? 32nd is the dead end, and then Balsam, that intersection's actually designed to try to preclude you from going north. But Cody is currently designed to allow turning in any direction. So, there's not, what we have not done at all at this point in time is suggest what those should be, because we need to figure out what the land use concept is, and that will inform what, if any, traffic reconfigurations would need to happen.
So, it's not necessarily that you're suggesting traffic should go through the neighborhood on Cody?
No, it's how it is currently.
That's how it is, okay.
Yeah, we're just documenting the existing transportation network. So, someone could go through right now, is what that question is.
Great, okay, thank you.
Ms. Nosler Beck.
You were talking about some of the medical offices that are located, I guess, there would be like where the multifamily is.
Yep.
So, all my family's medical offices are right there. Or as far as when we'll be hearing about if those offices want to stay there or not, is that on the same timeline as the center? Like, will we know that information in September or whenever?
I don't know that we will.
Okay.
SCL is having conversations with the Real Estate Investment Trust. But I think, I guess there's a chance, like, when they see maybe the progress concept, maybe it's something. But Ken, do you want to... Do you have more thoughts on that?
It's complicated, and there's probably, I can't get probably too far in the weeds, but, you know, the third-party Real Estate Investment Trust, Ventas, owns ground leases on those. And then, there's some cross-agreements in terms of, you know, what tenants they can and can't have. And there's a, it's a complicated agreement structure. I think the bottom line is, you know, from a market perspective, to the extent that most of those are medical office, that, you know, a lot of the medical office market is likely to shift to proximity to SCL. So, it'll likely soften that market for them, which will bring up some decision points for them. But they'll have to be a part, as a property owner, of the rezoning process. So, whoever would become the master developer for this would need to kind of bring them along. And it's just going to be a process that'll take some time.
Because part of that is the Children's Hospital satellite, and it's an incredible asset to our community. And a lot of those are pediatric dentistry and pediatric orthopedic and pediatricians' offices in those spaces. And so, I just, I guess the anchor there is Children's Hospital and what their plans are, where they're going. Okay, thanks so much. And then, I also just wanted to add, thanks to everyone for participating in this. And the blue house, I agree with Councilmember Hutchinson. I think it would be great if, in the report out on this, we had a deeper dive that captured more of what the blue house and the chapel mean to the community, just so that, at a glance, we can show, you know, the investment that we have there. Because that, I had some special family memories there, so I know I'm not the only one in the community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the current presentations, first of all, thank you for your involvement and the efforts you put into this and all the community involvement in this as well. Based on the designs as it's presently presented, are the street networks a further layer underneath this? Or is this a representation of the streets that would intersect this area?
As Lauren indicated, as we move into a preferred concept, which may, it'll be a combination of all three, but what we're hearing is the greatest support for A and C in some pieces. Then, we will need to look at what that street network could look like. It'll still be at a framework plan level, so we'd be looking at, are there essential, you know, ingress, egress points, changes to sort of operational functionality to make the development of the scale work? Where the exact streets would go would be determined by the, you know, future owner or developer, should they proceed with redeveloping the property. But we've set some expectations around, you know, sort of the feel and character of those streets, the density of the streets necessary to support the different uses that we're indicating in the framework plan.
Sure. And then, I guess, as it relates to the historical preservation efforts, we've gone through this before with the Fruitdale Elementary School. We actually used Eli Investments Partners, or Eli Hartman Investments, which has done work with the Laredo or...
Yeah, they're doing it.
Pancrecia. Yeah, Laredo Heights. So, with the Fruitdale School Building, that was going to be torn down, and it probably should have been torn down based on its condition. These properties are in much better condition, so they have a much greater likelihood. But at the same time, we couldn't just turn that back into a school. We had to find a particular use for that. So, for those that want to see these, you know, remain or reused, you have to be comfortable with whatever they turn into as well. So, that being said, I do have some concerns about the remaining mental health facility. And whether it remains or not, I think, also plays into what kind of retail or restaurants or other types of facilities are there, because at present, they're very conscious about being alcohol-free and those kinds of things, as well as, you know, when we talk about neighborhood parks and those type of situations as well. So, I'll be interested to see how that plays out. But I think any of the things that have been presented so far work as far as, you know, 10,000-foot level. But I think we have a lot of very anxious neighbors around here. And I don't want that anxious, or the anxiety to turn into silence or to turn into people not participating in the process, because if you don't participate, then your voice is silent, and that doesn't help you. So, you need to speak up, participate, and not let your frustrations or whatever get the better of you, and continue to participate. Because I've seen some of the comments and some of the emails come around that folks are saying, "Well, my voice isn't going to be heard," or "This is just like X, Y, and Z." Well, it's not. This has never been done before, and we will likely never experience some of this again. So, if you don't participate, then you've got nothing to say as it comes out.
Thank you, Mr. Stites, Ms. Hulteen, and Ms. Weaver, in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thank you to everybody that's worked on this, and especially the community members, because I will kind of second what Mr. Urban said. I've had feedback from the community and neighbors of people who are either afraid to be in the process or don't feel like their voice is going to be heard. And again, if you're not saying, if you're not saying out loud, nobody's hearing it. So, please make sure that you're having your voices heard. You know, as a member of the NRS a couple of years ago, as I look at like Concept C here, one of the things that I really like about it is that it seems to protect a lot of the existing neighborhoods, so that what's going into existing, or what's going to be by existing houses, looks like it'll be other single-family homes and parks and things like that. So, I see a lot of value in that, that there's an effort to take what was done in the NRS and the concepts that have come from that, and there's a lot of value to that. Because I think most of the neighbors, I think most of the neighbors have a realistic understanding that this is no longer going to be a hospital. I know a few people feel that we can go back and undo deals or something like that, but this is no longer going to be a hospital for most of this campus. So, having a realistic understanding that, you know, what we're going to get and what we want to plan out here is very important. So, to make sure that we protect those houses that are there and those residents that have been there for a long time, and not throw in a lot of things that don't look like what are already there, I think that's very important. And I agree with everything that's been said. We do need to make sure that it is called out, that those historical properties are very important to our community. And again, one of the things I do like, as Ms. Hoppe said, is that that is right up there in that civic space, and that could be used for a lot of different things. So, thank you for the work, and please, if there's more opinions out there, get in then, get in before it's too late.
Thank you, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad I'm wearing a mask, because I can't see my Hershey's chocolate bar in my face. So, I just agree with Councilmember Stites that participation, and Councilmember Urban, that it really is, you know, participation is how you are heard. And the thoroughness of this, you know, gives me a lot of confidence in where it's going to end up. So, I do have a question that is a little bit tangential, but, you know, Councilmember Nosler Beck's questioning about Children's Hospital, that is a tremendous asset to our community, and especially as we have more and more young families moving into Wheat Ridge. And, I mean, we're all clear where Lutheran's going. Can you speak to, at Clear Creek Crossing, what the market looks like for some of these medical services and buildings to be relocating there?
To, but, you know, there, what I can speak to is that they're building, I mean, part of their, what they're getting in, what they have entitled through the SDP approval, is a medical office building. And it's, you know, intended to open coincidental with the opening of the hospital. So, it's anticipated that certainly that will be attractive to a variety of medical providers because of its proximity to the new, shiny new hospital. Beyond that, you know, we can't really speak to what the market forces will do in terms of what stays and what goes.
Yep, but the opportunities do exist, so that we can retain it within our community?
Certainly, yeah. I mean, I think they'll want to capture between Ventas, this REIT that owns the ground leases, and SCL out at their new campus, they're going to want to capture as much market as they can that makes their hospital a better hospital.
Yep, well, and, yeah, makes us a better community, so thank you. And then, I'm just going to, you know, drop out there that that blue house would make a really great Makerspace. So, I had the microphone, though. So, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it's not our property, it's not our blue house. But certainly, you know, facilitating, you know, great opportunities that are percolating up in our community right now. I, you know, I'd love to see Makerspace there, so just dropping that seed, even though it was already germinating over here, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you. I know this is a 10,000-foot view, but could you just talk a little bit about the process of, you know, all three concepts have parks, and there's been sort of some discussion of gardens or possible agriculture, things like that. Can you talk about how a process, how the process is of creating a park? Because that is, I assume, will be city-owned land. How that happens in this whole process, in light of what we just talked about with private land and all of these things, just so constituents get an idea of how that happens from this 10,000-foot view as we drill down into different possible developers creating these spaces? And how do parks then, and each park's use and role start to form?
Yeah, well, thanks for asking that question. It's a good one. And, you know, I think the process, and you've all said it, but, I mean, this is a very high-level plan, right? It's intended to provide a reaction point for the community, to figure out, you know, from a variety of different input sources, you know, what are some of the important things that we preserve in this planning document? It's not intended to be a prescriptive document. So, you know, what we actually see on the ground will likely have components of what's in this high-level master plan, and other things will look a little different. And so, we'll need to create that expectation, and you'll see that reflected in the documents that come forward as the actual comprehensive plan amendment. What the process likely looks like from there is looking at a rezoning. And that rezoning would likely be another planned district, perhaps a planned mixed-use district. It could be one of our established mixed-use districts, something like mixed-use neighborhood. But regardless, that's a process. It's a very public process with public hearings, and, you know, it takes many, many months to get through a process like that. The location of open space would be firmed up much more specifically in those documents. So, in the case of a planned development, it would be in the ODP, the outlined development plan. In the case of a straight mixed-use district, if that would be the avenue that someone would pursue, it gets flushed out in the concept plan process. So, the location and the nature of open space would be reflected on those documents that would be reviewed through a very open and public hearing process. From there, logistically, to get a little more in the weeds, when we actually plat the property, so create subdivisions, they would make dedications of open space for, through that plating process. But it certainly is anticipated that there will be publicly-owned open space parks as a, you know, significant portion of this development, just not all the development, so.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering, what is the city's interest in this property? As far as a new rec center, city hall, any interest?
Mayor, you want?
You know, I've been a proponent to, we're about out of space in this building, and this may be an opportunity to create a new city hall, a new civic space. We've talked to educational institutions and libraries to see whether we could generate more interest in those types of uses, so that you have a more public gathering place, and there's more things that happen, and more opportunity for the public to come together. Now, whether that's, you know, in theater, someone, when we walked through the chapel property, you know, people said, "Well, we'd love to have a performance type of space that's a community amenity." So, that may be a possible use. But, you know, as sort of getting it out into the conversation, we've, you know, we thought that that may be an appropriate type of use for part of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I really like the idea of bringing some of our civic uses into that area, whether it's a city hall or, you know, having a police station somewhere in the community as well. Just a couple of comments as to Concept C. You kind of answered my question. It's not like A or B or C, it could be a combination of any of the three. I really like the idea of preserving the blue house, whether that's for a civic use or for something else, whether that's educational or not. I think that would be wonderful. And this Concept C I'm looking at, and I really appreciate, like Councilmember Stites have mentioned about preserving some of, you know, the single-family homes and what that looks and already feels like in the community. And with Concept C, you see all of the amenities, so the retail, the main street, the parks, and the low-density residential being all on the exterior, which I appreciate, because that means it's going to be welcoming to the entire community as opposed to, like, being in the center where it would kind of be, you know, in and around and exclusive to that, just that community. And you did mention the topography, and I appreciate that you're being mindful of not building high-density on high ground, because I think that would just, like, look really massive in that space. So, I really appreciate all the community members and input that's come out of this. And you guys have done a robust process, and it's not through yet. And I'm really excited to see what this could potentially become for our community, and I hope that it brings young families to Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. Additional discussion, Ms. Nosler Beck.
I just realized this is getting a little bit into the details. But I would like to also make sure that when we are talking about the historical recognition of the buildings on this site, that we, that the city also takes the opportunity, if we are going to be putting in any parks, to recognize both indigenous plants to this area and also the indigenous peoples that were here before settlers were on these lands. So, I just wanted to get that out there as an idea as well for some of these parks. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional discussion around the side of Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you. I just have a question about what happens after tonight. So, what's the process look like in the, to get from here to a final plan coming forward?
So, I think I mentioned earlier, but Thursday evening, we'll be presenting similarly as we did with you all this evening to the Planning Commission. We'll then be working with our steering committee, with staff, on developing that preferred development framework concept coming out of these preliminary alternatives. We actually talked about, and I failed to add to the slide, we were scoped to just do two rounds of focus groups, but we determined that we wanted to do one more round with the preferred alternative. Well, that's been a really effective tool, having good, meaningful, kind of open, transparent conversations with folks. And then, there'll be a fourth public meeting. And I don't remember the, do we have a date set for that one?
September 22nd in an open-house format, and we'll have the same content available on the project website.
on the project website as well.
And then we'll begin developing the plan based on the community input, um, and then we'll bring that all to you, or bring that to you all. Excuse me.
Yeah. So, we're then, uh... It's our intent, the, as an amendment to the comprehensive plan, it, it also requires a recommendation from the Planning Commission. So, it's our intent to have those public hearings in October with the goal of getting this in front of this council as a body, since you've been the one, you know, participating in this process. And, uh, knowing that there's a election in early November, we are targeting, strongly targeting, October 25th as a date for you to hold a public hearing, uh, for adoption of a subarea plan.
Ms. Hoppe.
I just wanted to clarify, it's just Planning Commission study session. So, the Planning Commission will be taking no action on the presentation, um, because it won't even be the, the draft plan that's suggested. And so, I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item?
If I may just add, uh, anybody that has not yet commented and wants to, if you go to the project page, you will see my smiling face and an email link, and, or you can just email me directly at planning@ci.wheatridge.co.us. So, we have a special inbox just for emails about this project, and we will continue to take them throughout the duration of the project. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Well, um, thank you very much, Jay, for a great presentation, and Lauren and Ken, thanks for being here. And I want to sort of maybe stress one more time what Lauren did and, and Mr. Stites, that we're looking for a robust engagement by our, by our population, by our residents, to, to speak up about this. This is a, a large piece of land in the center of our town that's changing uses, and, uh, this is a great opportunity to, um, to be able to have your voice heard. So, thank you to everyone who came and gave us your voices, and we look forward to continuing this discussion. Okay. So, we will, um, we will complete item number two, and I think we're going to take about a, um, a five or six-minute, um, break. Uh, so, we will con- convene at about five or six minutes from now and go to item number three.
To agenda item number three, this is the mayor and city council compensation. And Mr. Goff, do you have a staff?
Just real quick, the memo is fairly short, but pretty straightforward. As you all know, we're preparing our 2022, believe it or not, budget. And we came across some data on pay for mayors and council members across the metro area. So we noticed that it's been quite some time since we've considered an increase here in Wheat Ridge, and you're quite, it's quite low, actually, I think you're the lowest in our survey. And so we thought we'd bring this forward to the council to see if you'd want to consider any changes while we're working on the 2022 budget. And as you know, per charter, elected officials cannot, you can't give a raise to yourself, basically. So if you decide to increase the pay, salary, wages for mayor and council, it would only go into effect for those seats that are open this November. And then the remaining council members would be eligible for the next, when their next term starts. So right now, the mayor in Wheat Ridge makes $10,080 a year, and the last increase was in 1997. And city council members currently make $7,200 a year, and the last increase was in 2001. And if you look at the survey results, the average of the cities that we surveyed and the cities that provided us the information, the average for the mayor is monthly is 1522 or annually 18,261. For council, the average is 1,067 monthly or 12,805 a year. And then some cities do provide an additional amount for a mayor pro tem, and the average of that is 1,090 a month or 13,077 a year. So we're just looking for any direction from city council. If you would like to make any increases, it would be required to be approved through an ordinance, public hearing, but we could make those changes to the 2022 budget, or include those changes to the 2022 budget if you so desire.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go to questions, or Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've served on city council now for going on eight years, and this is something that I don't think any of us do this for, that paycheck, although this paycheck is helpful when it comes to being able to spend the time necessary to do this job. And I think that that's really what this sort of increase is talking about, is making sure that the folks who are in the seat have the capacity and the bandwidth to make the decisions and do the things that are necessary to be a legislator for the city. And I use the word legislator because that's what the Bureau of Labor Statistics uses to describe this occupation. And the median average annual wage is about $53,000 for legislators across the country and the local government area. And I did some math, and basically, on our current rate, we're spending about five hours a week, between five and 10 hours a week, based on some of this math here. So I would be okay with us increasing the counselor pay from $7,200 a year to $4,400, or $14,400 a year. I know that we're doubling it at that point, but I think that, given the amount of time and energy and effort it takes to be a city council member, and the fact that we never hardly ever bring this subject up, it's better to do it now than later, and I would encourage us to consider a significant increase in this.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Ms. Noslerbeck?
One of the reasons that people don't participate in running for office is that they have to prioritize their time. So you get a lot of people who, if they aren't going to be able to work and won't be compensated in their public service role at the same level that they would at their job, because they have to provide for their family, they don't run. And it's an equity issue and an accessibility issue. I strongly support us increasing the amount of pay for people that serve. I'm also making this statement, this would not impact my salary directly. It would impact folks who are running in this election or upcoming elections, but I strongly support what council member Urban suggested, so that we can get more people running for office, because this helps make that decision.
Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you. So I agree. I think, you know, it's been 20 years, and I don't think there's very many paid positions that haven't gone up in the last 20 years. And to council member Urban's point, you know, we don't do this for the money. However, what I've realized since taking office is that, you know, there's the service and the duty to be a city council person, but there's so many opportunities beyond this to support other initiatives and endeavors in the city. And I find that I'm doing that, you know, as a city council member, because I want, you know, my city and my district to thrive, but it ends up being, you know, substantial additional volunteer work, it feels like. You know, I'm getting paid to be a city council person, but I think being, you know, adequately compensated for representing and investing and championing the city, it would, I think, also allow for, you know, city council members to, you know, increase their availability for the additional things they'd be doing in the city. And then to council member Noslerbeck's point, it is an equity issue. I mean, if we want to diversify our city council and to see, you know, people with, you know, different backgrounds stepping up, I think, you know, making sure people are getting justly compensated for their time is important to make sure we get those type of people running for office. So I support doubling it for the mayor's salary. Let's double that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Ms. Dozeman?
So this is actually for city staff as we're going into the 2022 budget, because I really appreciate this visual. I had no idea that, in comparison to other cities that are roughly the same size, that we're making significantly less. But I also was wondering if the city could potentially do this for our city staff. And I know you guys do an audit of, to ensure that we're competitively based in salaries, but, you know, after coming off the Carnation Festival weekend and all of the police department, our public works, and our parks and rec, how hard they worked and how accommodating they were, I really want to ensure that we are paying our staff a highly competitive wage so that we can recruit and retain good people. So, I mean, we haven't discussed this for 20 years as far as city council, and I know we all work hard. I know, you know, on a good week, it's only five to 10 hours of work. Most weeks, it's a part-time job, if you're doing everything that you're doing on top of reading the packet and showing up to the meetings. So, you know, it is a significant amount of work, especially with the mayor going to all the ribbon cuttings and doing the regional work that he's doing as well. So, you know, I support it increasing to what extent we can have that discussion ongoing, but if staff could put this together for some of our city employees as well, so that we can take a look at that and make sure that we're competitively based in comparison to other cities, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, council member. It's pretty timely. I think that's where Ms. Scheck is right now in the office, in her office, working on our compensation plan for the budget. That's one of the last things we're doing, and we do a market analysis every two years to make sure that we're staying competitive and within our market. And there is going to be a lot of increases this next year. It's just the nature of our market right now. And the good news is, I think a lot of them are in some of the lower paid positions that really need the bumps, our parks maintenance folks and folks like that. We'll be seeing some increases in that, so you'll see that during the budget process.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just looking at the ordinances, and the first time, it was 24 years ago, and then the second time, it was 20 years. So they passed the first ordinance, five to three. The second time, five to four. So what I'm not understanding is, so new people coming in, okay, would be able to get the raise, a new price, but the people who, the other four people who sit here, don't get it until the next election, okay? And that's because of home rule?
That's the way the city charter is written, and I don't know if it's, I know it's not specific to Wheat Ridge, but I don't know if it's a state law also, but your, this Wheat Ridge City Charter says that a sitting council member cannot increase or decrease their own salary. So, you know, if whoever's running this November, if they're reseated, they're considered, that's a new term, that's, and so they're eligible for the increase. But the folks that are not starting a new term in November, they have to wait till they start a new term to be eligible.
Okay, because in regular business, I don't think that would fly. If somebody new was coming in, would make more money than somebody who's already been working.
Yep, that's in your city charter.
Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would say in regular business, though, you don't get to vote to give yourself a raise, so there's that. Although, I mean, if you're, if you're the, well, but you also have to, but you also have to increase the bottom line to do that, so, and that's different. So, yeah, I mean, it's a little strange that I'm making the same amount that my dad did, you know, 10 years ago at this point, because the cost of living is not the same. So I would definitely support doubling for both the mayor and council, just because it's been 20 years since it's been looked at, and it may be 20 years before it's looked at again, because nobody loves politicians that gives themselves a raise. But it really is important, and I agree with Councilman Noslerbeck, we want the best and the brightest in the city to come out and do this. And as, you know, we have conversations with people, it's, I would love to do that. I don't have the time, I don't have the money, I don't have the resources, and it's got to be something that's got to be worth it for the people who really have that capacity to do. So I would support doubling for both for the next term, and hopefully we won't have to look at it again for another 20 years.
Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To council member Stites' point, in drafting this ordinance, could we include a clause mandating this review every six years, so that we're not putting, I mean, it is awkward, right? It's super awkward, especially since, you know, half of us will get it and, you know, what have you. But I think if it was, if it had some sort of cycle or rhythm to it, and it wasn't incumbent on council members to bring it forward and make it a priority, but rather it happened every six years, I think that would be probably good for everybody, so that it's not 20 years before it happens again.
Yeah, definitely, yes. I think we could include a clause in the ordinance that says that.
Okay, so six years makes sense to me, because then it's offset, like, so if you've got, since we have four-year terms, you would be having people, if you're still on for both, anyway, it works mathematically. Don't ask me, explain the math. You know, I don't, I don't do, show my math work, I just tell you my math works.
Just parenthetically, if we were to double it, then we would almost have gotten to an average of 3% cost of living increase yearly.
I was gonna say that $7,200 in 2001 is equal to $11,225 today. So that, you know, the doubling it would, like you said, bring it up to that 3%, so. And I know it sounds kind of hard when you say doubling it, but since we haven't been doing anything with it for 20 years, it makes sense that that would be the case, but.
Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And it sounds like there's a lot of support for doubling the pay. One thing that I would just like to bring up, from being the mayor pro tem for the last three years, and I don't anticipate being mayor pro tem next year, somebody, somebody else. I just, I think, while the work that the mayor pro tem does is not as much as like the mayor does within, like, all of the regional stuff, but it's definitely a significant more amount of work. And so I know some of the municipalities pay their mayor pro tems a little bit more, and so I think we should consider that the mayor pro tem gets a little bit more than council, but less than the mayor. And, so we're looking at, so I was thinking maybe if we're doubling every, if we're doubling everything, that would be council would be getting 1,200 a month, so maybe the mayor pro tem gets 14, 15?
So that would just, you're suggesting an additional 200 to 300 dollars for mayor pro tem?
More, for the mayor pro tem.
Ms. Hulteen?
I have a question about that. So, so let's say, so let's just say, you know, someone who's a seated counselor becomes the mayor pro tem, then they would not be eligible for that, or would they, because they're elected as mayor pro tem by their peers?
But it won't start until after the next election, so it would be a brand-new election. The mayor pro tem would be a brand-new election. So like, my mayor pro tem will end in November, and you, the sitting body, will elect a new one by the end of November.
Right, so that's what I'm asking. If it's a seated counselor who's not eligible for the pay raises, gets elected as mayor pro tem, would they be eligible or not eligible?
It would seem to me you would want to phrase it as a counselor upon election as mayor pro tem would get sort of an additional stipend for the duties of mayor pro tem, something along.
Sure, okay, just by a couple hundred, say, by 200, an additional $200 stipend. In that way, that covers it, because if you're a seated counselor, you get elected as a mayor pro tem, you don't go automatically go to a mount, you just get an additional $200 a month.
Okay, so it's not salaried, it's like additional stipend. I just, we may have to check with, we may have to check with.
Mr. Dahl is listening and watching and has texted me, so, I'm not sure if he's going to give back to me on this point right now, but if he's not, he's heard your question, and we'll make sure when we bring this back that that's addressed appropriately.
Yeah, so I guess for that interest, I mean, if there is a way to separate that as like, you know, an additional stipend or something, as opposed, I don't, I mean, it's probably threading a needle there, but.
Mr. Dahl says the answer is yes. Upon election as mayor pro tem, you can get additional, and we can write that into the draft ordinance, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I would like to try.
Mr. Urban had his hand up.
I'd like to make a consensus that we consider moving forward the increase of counselor pay from $7,200 a year to $14,400 a year, and mayor's salary from $10,080 a year, which was last changed in 1997, and increase that to $21,600 a year, with a $200 monthly stipend, if you will, for the role of mayor pro tem, which could be allocated to any sitting member of council upon their election to that position. I'm sure Jerry Dahl will give us language on that, but I move forward that consensus. With a six-year review of counselor salary to occur every six years.
We have a consensus on the floor that is adopted. We will issue that to, get our, get our lawyer, get our lawyers working on it and to move forward. So that will, that will conclude agenda item number three. Let's get to that agenda here. I know that we're.
We are part through. Staff reports. Just real quick, it's late, I know, but just a quick heads up, we did have a meeting with Jeffco Health last week, was that last week, the mayor and I were on, and if you hadn't seen or heard, they put out a public health order tonight for schools. There's likely going to be another public health order probably next week, having to do with other critical industries and vaccination requirements. So they are gathering additional information this week from stakeholders to see what the county wants to do, and, but likelihood something will come out next week. We're moving forward on the hotel ordinance, making some great progress. We have a meeting with the hotel managers and owners on August 30th to discuss the draft ordinance, and we put some FAQs together for them, and that's getting sent out to them this week, so that they have time to look at it. And I think we have it scheduled for first reading on October 11th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Staff reports, elected official reports. Ms. Noslerbeck?
I just wanted to apologize for being late. It's back to school, and I don't have timing figured out, so apologies to those who attended and were speaking earlier. And also with that, good luck to everybody starting school tomorrow. Thank you to our teachers and our educators for everything that you have done, and I hope you had a good summer and stayed healthy. Let's do it.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. I just want to say thank you again to everybody who worked so hard on the Carnation Festival this weekend, not only the organizers, but the volunteers, the service groups, the police department, Parks and Rec. It was super fun and amazing, as usual. I'm glad that it was back this year. One of the, I went to the Carnation Festival in August, just before I moved here in October, and I was like, yes, so glad I'm buying a house here. And so, yeah, thank you very much for everybody for that, and also, yes, back to school, and this August has felt almost as bad as Mayhem, May usually is, but I just, everybody hang in there, and just remember that, you know, there's going to be a lot more foot traffic on the roads at 7:00 AM, with people walking to school, and bicycle traffic and stuff like that, so just keep your eyes out.
Thank you. We'll go around the horn. Mr. Urban, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Stites?
I'll just reiterate, thank you for everybody who worked on the Carnation Festival and everything with school, I'll just, you know.
No surprise, we'll go to Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. So I'd like to give a special shout-out to Joe Demott, the chairman of the Carnation Festival for the last nine years. He does a phenomenal job. Pietrus hosts our meetings, monthly meetings, and they're on the second Monday at 5:30, and so we welcome any of the public that wants to come and join us and be a part of the festival and be a regular board member or volunteer or committee member. It's fun, you get pizza and salad, and we're a good group of folks. And I also wanted to give a shout-out to Walt Pettit. He has been involved with the Carnation Festival since the city's incorporation in 1969, so he is the longest-standing member and participant of the Carnation Festival, and I don't know how he does it, but he runs circles around me the whole weekend, and he's a tireless leader, and he is a wonderful man, and so I wanted to thank him, and I also wanted to thank the rest of the board with the Carnation Festival. It was a great weekend, and we had a great time.
And you?
Thank you, you also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to thank Mother Nature for us having good weather this weekend, great Carnation Festival, and also for all the students who are going back to school, have a safe and good year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen?
Yeah, so of course, the Carnation Festival was awesome, and it was the first year my son and his friends walked from our house and disappeared for five hours. And I was like, I wonder what they're doing. I was like, actually, I don't wonder what they're doing. But they came back, and they were just, his friends, none of them live in Wheat Ridge, and they were like, that's so cool, you can walk to that from your house, and the boba tea, they thought was a great value, they were market testing it, so. But I really want to thank you, Leah, like, it's just really a delight to see you on the morning of the parade. I think the parade is just one of the coolest things that we do, and, you know, it's like I hate being in it, because I don't get to see it, but I love being in it, because I get to see everybody who's watching. I mean, it's like, it's a win-win, so thank you for that. And then I really actually want to call out the cleanup crew. I was in Anderson Park today, and it was like pristine. I mean, it was like, we didn't just have a gigantic festival, and 44th Avenue was clean, and so just huge kudos to our staff and everyone who got us looking great the morning after. I think that's really remarkable, only in Wheat Ridge. So I think, what? Give them, every, raises, raisins, raisins for everybody, as my son used to say. So anyway, just, I think, thank you, everyone. It's now after Carnation Festival, so I'm looking forward to 2022.
Ms. Weaver?
Thank you. Leah, thank you. The Carnation Parade and the festival was amazing, and you're the reason that goats are on a float in the carnival, because it never occurred to me until, I think we were talking one day, and she suggested that I put goats on a float. So thanks. It turned out well. The other thing I wanted to ask, Mr. Goff, I know that the Airbnb regulations and licenses, excuse me, short-term rental have gone into effect, and I have been asked by some constituents how they call the city or get ahold of if there are issues. There've been some issues in District 3, and I just didn't know how to advise people on who to call, how to get ahold of.
Depends what the issues are, I guess.
Big parties.
Oh, big parties, okay.
Lots of people being rented, too, and sort of, I didn't know if I should be following up on if this location has a license, or how now does a normal citizen sort of interact with the license process that we've created?
Sure, yeah, I mean, if it's an immediate issue, obviously, call the police department. They'll go out and address any noise issues or any other type of things that may be coming from a large party. But otherwise, yes, they can call, I don't know if I can give a phone number right now, but just call the city manager's office and report the address, and we'll check on the licensing and get back with them.
Great, great, thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you all. Good meeting tonight. I would like to add my concurrence with the thanks to Joe and Leah and Walt Pettit. I saw Walt and Chris, absolutely. I saw Walt yesterday afternoon about 3 o'clock. I saw Walt yesterday afternoon about 3 o'clock as he was folding up and he had, was still working hard, but it had a great, great thing. I got to tell you that it was really a joy to come and be at the parade. I thought there was a lot of energy at the parade. I want to thank all the people that came to view it and came to the festival. We've got really a lot of great things going on in our city and the citizens and the leaders in this community make that happen. So we thank you for being here tonight. We will be back here one week from tonight at 7:00 for a regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would remind folks that the deadline for submitting petitions for nomination to office is next Monday, August 23rd at 5:00 PM on the dot. Anyone who's still interested in running has time to come to the clerk's office and get the petition form and the other information and forms they need. Again, the deadline is Monday, the 23rd at 5:00 for petitions to be submitted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Miller, we have our treasurer. Do you have anything for tonight?
I would like to give a wish to the president. I would like to give a wish to the president.
Okay, well, thank you very much. If there's no more business to come before us, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.